This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It's October 18th, 2021. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the October 18th, 2020 meeting of the Town Council to order at 6:32. I'll call upon each councillor by name. At that time, they should unmute their mic and say "present." This will indicate that we can hear you and you can hear us. Please remember to mute your mic after saying "present." Shalini Baumill.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Demont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam is going to be running a little late. Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane. Kathy, you need to unmute.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz is absent, and has Dorothy joined us yet? No. Okay. There is no chat room for this meeting. The meeting is being recorded and later can be viewed on Amherst Media. It can also be viewed as we meet on Amherst Media. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment or ask a question, please click the Raise Hand button. If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing remote participation, I will decide how to address the situation. Discussion may be suspended while we address technical issues, and the minutes will note if a disconnect occurs. Athena will be monitoring councillors' connections, and if necessary, we will pause the meeting. I want to go on to our announcements. Athena, if you would put them up on the board. Thank you. This is how to connect in case you have not done that, or you need some assistance, please let us know. We have some regular meetings of the council coming up. And if need be, because of the agenda length tonight, we have a special meeting scheduled at 4 o'clock tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon. I hope not in the morning. Next slide, please. Please note that the polls will be open for elections from, on November 2nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There is still time, but very little left, to apply to vote by mail. You do that by going to the town website. And next week, on Monday, we begin early voting, which will be in Town Hall, on the first floor in the meeting room. And that is every day next week from 8:30 to 4 o'clock, except on Thursday, when the room and the polling capability will be open until 8 o'clock. Thank you. We are now going to have public comment, but let me mention before we begin that that there are two other times tonight when we will have specific public comment. One is in relationship to the proposed redistricting, represincting. The second actually will be in regard to setting the tax for this coming year. So this is the time for general public comment. Could I please see raised hands for anybody who would like to make general public comment? Are there any other hands at this time? Okay. Jennifer Page, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, this is Jennifer Page. I live in Amherst. I can't stay and wait and watch for the redistricting item on the agenda, so I'm just going to make my public comment now. I want to strongly encourage the Town Council to vote to approve the proposed districts and precincts map created by the Districting Advisory Board, so that it can be submitted to the state by the October 30th deadline. I was very impressed with the deep analyses performed by the Districting Advisory Board to create fair and equitable districts. I was particularly pleased to see that Precinct 7 will be unbound from Precinct 8. Precinct 7 includes the apartment and condominium complexes on East Hadley Road, the Butternut Complex, and the smaller houses in the Long Meadow, Farmington, Glendale neighborhood. Precinct 8 has been dominated by wealthier families and larger homes, such as in the Amherst Woods area. The combining of these two precincts into the current District 5 has deeply disenfranchised lower-income residents, so I'm glad to see that the recommended map separates these two districts. This change will be empowering for voters in Precinct 7. I urge you to approve the proposed map for greater equity and voter empowerment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jennifer. Natalie Rubin, this is our general comment period.
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. I'm actually, this is my first time meeting that I've been to. I'm a student at UMass Amherst. And I just wanted to come to kind of voice some concerns that I had with the vaccination data for Amherst. A lot of me and like a lot of my friends that I go to UMass with have been really looking at the data that you guys have been publishing, and we just have a lot of concerns with the way that things are set up with it. It just seems really confusing, the way that the numbers are being betrayed. And so I had a meeting with the chancellor today where I posed the question to him why the Amherst vaccination rates were so low, and he came to inform me about your website, how you guys list that it's at 78% right now. But I think it's just extremely concerning to me that the town is using vaccination rates for students who got vaccinated not in Amherst. And I think our concern is more not with the student population because it doesn't, the numbers don't exactly really add up from people who are just kind of looking at it and trying to do some like basic math about the fact that our undergraduate student population is like, it's between like 96 and 98% vaccinated. And we just don't, me and a lot of people that I've talked to just don't think that it's fair for the town of Amherst. I understand that for the census, you know, you guys have to count us as, like you count people as residents, but it just doesn't really make sense to me for those numbers to be counted into your own vaccination rates when a lot of us were not vaccinated in Amherst. And so our concern was more that myself and a lot of other people feel that it would be very beneficial to have data that reflects the vaccination rates for the citizens of Amherst who are there, you know, like year-round and are, you know, the student population, because that's who we're concerned about. Because last year, there were a lot of nasty comments made towards people who go to the school. I identify as someone who is a college student at UMass Amherst, and it was extremely disheartening to see a lot of people talking about us as if we just have no regard for public health and public safety. And so I just think that the numbers really aren't adding up. I don't know if maybe I'm just interpreting them wrong, but I've shown it to a lot of other people, and a lot of other people are pretty confused about them. So I more just wanted to make this announcement to ask if there, I know that you guys, they can't respond, but if there's some way that some more specific data could be released, or that the data could maybe make a little bit more sense, because as someone who's tried to interpret it and given it to other people who have experienced trying to interpret data like this, a lot of us are just really confused and don't think that it's extremely representative, because you know, we all did our part. We came to Amherst, we all got vaccinated, and we'd like to see if people in Amherst are, you know, doing their part with that because of how much concern there was about our public safety, like one last fall, when people said that we shouldn't be allowed back, you know, we proved that we should be allowed back and that we do, we're committed to keeping Amherst safe. So we're just concerned and want to make sure that people in Amherst, you know, feel the same way, especially people who are pretty critical of us coming back. So if maybe there's just any way that some more clear data could be released, or just some clarifications, because it seems like there's a lot of discrepancies in data, and this is something that's really important, because you know, us as students, we came back and we want to be able to go into Amherst and feel safe, and I think everyone else wants to too. So, thank you.
Natalie, thank you for joining us, and if you would, please send an email to towncouncil@amherstm.gov, so we can perhaps respond to you that way. Okay. Janet Keller, please enter the room. I want to remind you that the time limit is three minutes.
Hi, thank you for allowing these comments. I, Janet Keller, District 1. And I'm asking the council to please vote for special permits for apartments in the four residential Village Centers, Pomeroy's Village, North Amherst and Gateway, as well as switch to special permit in the General Business District downtown. Apartments have many more units with, in a building, and many more buildings within a complex, so they have a huge impact on places where they are allowed. And you are looking at, in the future, possibly taking the cap, the 24-unit cap off, so they could have even more impact, and they've had quite an impact at 24 units. So, and I think it's really important, oh, the special permits allow the permitting body to adjust to the conditions they find out on the ground in those Village Centers, and to require different things for the different conditions they encounter. And while there are some things that are very common to the Village Centers, like all of them are very close to and/or about major flood zones, but only two of them, East Village and North Amherst, are unprotected National Register Historic Districts. And a special permit would allow that to be taken into account. They, I think it's also really important to protect the businesses in these Village Centers. Pomeroy, East Village, and North Amherst have extensive and thriving small local businesses. We do not want them to be put into competition with apartment buildings, which may be easier for the owner to manage, but do not serve the surrounding community the way the business districts do. So I would just like to reiterate how important it is to have that ability to tailor the permitting path for the conditions on the ground and to retain special permit for apartments in the residential Village Centers, as well as to switch to them in the General Business District downtown. Thanks for allowing the comments.
Thank you for your comment, Jen. Are there any other public comments at this time? We will have two special comment periods later about districting, redistricting, represincting, and also about our taxes. All right, seeing none, then I also want to make note that Dorothy Pam has joined us. She actually joined us at least a speaker ago. So I want to spend a little time on the consent agenda because it's long, and I want to make sure that we understand what each of the things is for. And so before I make the motion, let me just go through them. The first one is to suspend Town Council Rules or Procedure 8.4. And what that allows us to do is act on the three things listed below. The first one being the EMS equipment, the second one being back in spaces, and the third one allowing me to sign a letter regarding the space for ACTV. Then we go on to the actual motions. These were ones that we chose because we did not feel that they needed a great deal of discussion. The first one is referral. This is a vote that we have had before, in fact, twice before. And each time we refer it, it has to go back to CRC and the Planning Board for a hearing, and then they have to come back. So it's not for us to decide tonight. It is merely a referral for that purpose. The next one, 8H, has been removed from the agenda, and we will not be dealing with that tonight. 8I, when we discussed the Performance Shell, there were specifically two things that we felt also needed to be done. One was a referral of the, to the Finance Committee to look at the maintenance fund related to the Performance Shell. The second was referral to TSO to just review the Public Ways Policy, to make sure or to see if we need to add anything based on the fact that this is now going to be a much more substantial venue for performances and therefore reservations of the Town Common. Both of these are motions to refer, and they were requested during the time we were doing the Performance Shell discussion. 8J actually authorizes me to go ahead and sign the letter that requests an extension of EverSource's space for Amherst Media. 9A, 1 and 2 were our actual approval appointments. Both of them were passed unanimously by TSO. And the very last one is the approval of three sets of minutes. So with that, I'm going to actually make a motion and look for a second. Is there any question? Dorothy, Darcy. You need to unmute, Darcy.
I'd like to remove 8I regarding the Performance Shell.
Okay. Are there any others? Okay. Motion therefore is to move the following items and printed motions thereunder, and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules or Procedure 8.4 for the following agenda items. Authorization of a three-year lease agreement for LifePAC 15 EMS Equipment. 8F, long-term parking ways, requests back in parking spaces at 11 to 9 and 23 to 25 North Pleasant Street. 8J, authorization of Council President to sign letter of support for Amherst Community Television, ACTV, to EverSource. Approval of 8E, referral of extension of zoning, Article 14, temporary zoning to Community Resources Committee, Planning Board, Governance, and Organization and Legislation Committee. Approval of 8H, referral residential parking, regulation changes to Lincoln Ave., south of Amity Street, and south, I'm sorry, 8H does not belong there. 8I has also been removed. 8H has been taken off the agenda. Approval of 88J, authorization of Council President to sign letter of support for Amherst County Community Television, ACTV, to EverSource. Approval of 9A, 1 to 2, 1 and 2, the following Town Manager Appointments, African Heritage Reparation Assembly, Community Preservation Act Committee. And approval of the following Town Council Meeting Minutes. September 27th, 2021, Special Town Council Meeting, Primer on the Master Plan. September 27th, 2021, Special Town Meetings, Public Forum on the Master Plan. September 27th, 2021, Regular Town Council Meeting. October 4th, 2021, Regular Town Council Meeting. Is there a second?
Second, Hanneke.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'm going to begin the vote with Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Baumill.
Yes.
It is unanimous for those of us here, so it's 12, 0, 0, and 1 absent. Okay. I want to check now very quickly with Irene and see whether or not your members are here, or if we need to move to the next agenda item instead.
Let me see, because I see somebody else join now. So we have quorum, and we were waiting for, but we were waiting for Suadet to join. So I don't know how you want to proceed.
Well, why don't I go ahead with the tax classification, which is the tax rate and exemption. This follows a presentation made by Davis, David Burgess, as a consultant to the Board of Assessors, Finance Director Sean Manzano. I'm sorry, is there? Yeah.
If not, we can start the presentation and wait, Sue is going to connect and be here for the questions.
All right. Then let me go back to, our next action item is redistricting. We are actually not voting tonight. This is a presentation, and I need to call upon Irene. Did you?
Du霍尼.
Du霍尼, thank you. I appreciate that, who is Chair of the DAB, to call their meeting to order.
So I called the District Advisory Board meeting to order. I'm going to call the names of the members, and can you acknowledge that you can hear, that you can speak by muting yourself? Peggy Shannon.
Here.
Tracy Safian.
Here.
Marlene Blaustein.
Here.
Mahet Galani.
Here.
I believe Joseph is absent, and Irene Du霍尼 here, so.
And there are three other people who are present.
Yes.
And I want to make sure they can hear you, though they were non-voting members, they were consistent members throughout. Susan Odette.
She hasn't joined yet. She's going to join at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, Mike Warner.
I can, I'm here.
Thank you. And Dee Shabazz.
Yep, I'm here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dee. I know Sue is actually finishing training for people. So we will begin with the presentation, and Athena, if you could please put that up.
I think they wanted to do that.
Okay.
If you, if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen.
Please go ahead.
One second, I lost everybody. So when I'm presenting, so the questions are at the end, I'm assuming?
Yes, they're, yes, they are.
Okay, welcome. So this is a presentation from the District Advisory Board to the Town Council on October 18th. We're going to go over the composition and purpose of the meeting of the Board, the process that we went through to redraw the maps, the challenges that drawing the maps in Amherst we will encounter. What's the recommended maps, and we will ask for feedback and share the next steps that should be taken. So the first thing is, the whole, the, the charter established the membership of the DAB as nine voting members with residents of Amherst with two members per district. Currently, we have six members, myself, Irene Du霍尼, and Mahet Galani from District 1, Marlene Blaustein from District 2. District 3 is represented by Tracy Safian and Joseph Gordon, and District 5 is Peggy Shannon, that is acting as the vice chair. Two other members were at the beginning or during some time of the committee were Craig Meadows and Tommy Parks, but both resigned early in the process. The other three members of the committee are the Town Clerk. The non-voting members are the Town Clerk, Susan Odette, the IT person from Town, Mike Warner, and the representative of the Board of the Registers, Demetri Shabazz. So the purpose of, and the charge of the DAB is to review based on the census data from 2020, to review the districts and propose changes is necessary to such districts to ensure the uniformity in number of inhabitants and conformity with the state and federal requirements. So some of the requirements include that no, that there cannot be more than 4,000 inhabitants per precinct, that each precinct and district, they talk about words, but for that purpose, districts, for our town, we, there are districts. The population must be within 5% of the average. To the extent possible, precincts and districts should be compact and continuous, to keep neighborhoods and areas of common interest together, and no dilution of minority group member votes by the Voting Rights Act. And then we have to prepare and submit a report and proposed map to the Town Council for approval and voting. And the final map, and this is very important on the timeline, we, the town needs to submit the map and all the documentation that goes with it before then of the day of October 29th, 2021, in a hard copy. So essentially, it needs to leave Amherst on the 28th, unless there's somebody who's willing to drive and hand-deliver in the Boston area on the 29th. The document said the 30th, but 30th is a Saturday, so it has to be there on the 29th. So what was our process? We started meeting only on August 4th, 2021. We used most of our meeting time. We met for over two hours each week to discuss the work that we did individually outside meeting time. We spent several hours, each of us, creating maps and going, pouring over data. Based on the preliminary data, so when we started meeting, we didn't have the actual data from the census. We started with preliminary data that had projected a much higher population for Amherst. So we started initially working with 15 precincts, not 10. And that was because the projected numbers were much higher, that when the census came out, it came out to 39,263 residents in Amherst. So we consulted with Town Council, Town Legal Council, that they saw no issues of keeping 10 precincts. And we voted as a committee, as the Board, to keep 10 precincts and not to increase to 15 for multiple reasons, and particularly the increased cost that would, for the town in running elections if we had 15 precincts instead of 10. Even though the numbers would be harder to make the precincts so that they would be no more than 4,000, we were limiting our numbers. We chose this way because we were, we saw that we didn't want to impose additional expenses to the town at this time. So we set up some priorities on how to set up the precincts and the districts. The, this included that the state and the charter requirement, so the population had to be between 3,730 and 4,000 residents. The 4,000 is a hard stop for the precincts. You cannot go above that. They have to be continuous with minimal fingers and tails, to keep the neighborhoods and communities of interest together, to try to balance the number of voters by district, and this is something that by the nature of Amherst, it's not the traditional other towns where the, the distribution of voters might be more uniform. In Amherst, it's not that case. It's not uniformly distributed. We made a point of not unfairly diluting voting strengths of minority groups, and to retain current precincts and districts as much as possible. These were our priorities when we set up. These were our um priorities when we set up to draw the maps. We created many maps and discussed many versions even within each map um and about precincts and districts. I think uh Mike created over 30 maps for us. Um, we did, some were minimal variations, some were drastic variations. As late as early October, we had three maps, um draft maps, um that were still under consideration. And the DAB voted unanimously to recommend one of the three at this October 5th meeting. And this is the mid, the, the map that we are presenting today. What did we do for public outreach? Um, this is an important fact, matter for uh districting is important for the town. So we tried to be as open as possible and in a short amount of time under rapid turnover that we had. So we had, in each of our weekly meetings, we had two public comment periods on each of the meeting, one at the beginning, one at the end. There could be asked that people could send us um comments by email or left it with posted maps, and this I'm gonna talk later. We issued a press release as soon as we started meeting, uh inviting the community for input. We had a second press release uh in September to encourage the community on the input of the three draft maps that we had created and input for comment. Large copies of the maps were printed and posted in Town Hall and the Jones Library. All of our meetings were recorded. The last two meetings were aired through Amherst Media, and the other ones, the previous meetings got into the loop of um being broadcast by the Amherst Media. There were some presentations by some of our members at District 5 and District 3 meetings, and we tried to do outreach to other districts and groups. Um, many of the public comments and feedbacks were incorporated into the maps and that led to revisions of uh our maps. So, what um what was the, what did census tell us? So the census tell us that the Amherst grew by 1,400, um 1,444 people from 2010 to 2020. The main increases were in the Onus College dorms, UMass, uh and New House in downtown. The major decreases were Hampshire College and population decrease in some neighborhoods. We really, there might be some potential undercounting due to the COVID-19 and I, and other sources. Um, the population in South Amherst isn't growing as downtown and UMass is. And there are already some housing, so we know that the census is already all because some housing and population, they have happened since 2020 when the census take place. So now um Tracy's gonna continue. Um.
Okay. All right, thank you Irene. Um, so next slide, please.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying. One second. Nope.
Okay. Um, right, so you know, what we did, we started with is we looked at the official population in Amherst based on the 2020 census, the final data that was released in mid-August. And what it showed us is that eight of the 10 current precincts do not satisfy the requirements, the state requirements, or the LEDRC guidelines of requiring less than 4,000 uh people per precinct and also uh they call it a variance, which is not a statistical variance, but the percentage difference from the mean of no more than 5%. So there were only two of the 10 current precincts that met that. And then at the district level, we saw that with District 3 and with District 5 that they were both out of compliance with those requirements. Um, next slide, please. So, you know, one of the challenges that we faced right away is that, so the main districts that needed updating per our charge were District 3 and District 5, and that they're not adjacent to each other. So it's not like you can just grow one and shrink the other, but that means you actually need to adjust other districts as well in order for all of them to come into compliance. Next slide, please. Um, and as Irene was speaking briefly about earlier, you know, one of the challenges in Amherst is that we have such a disparate population and population density where we go from very, very dense areas such as the UMass, some of the UMass dorms, for example, the southwest dorm complex at UMass has 5,500 beds when fully occupied, um 5,500 residents. Um, and then we have a number of parts of town that have zero residents. Um, the data that we received from the census is at the census block group level, and there's 423 census blocks. And most of our analysis was done at that level. Um. So as I was showing, just on that previous slide, just, you know, that we do have, if you look at the campus population, it's a total of 41% of Amherst's population lives in campus housing, and that's only 2% of Amherst land area. Um, so in terms of when we started to look at the census block data, next slide, please. So as we're showing here, so um, and this has been a challenge, this challenge with the southwest dorms has been around for a while. Um, it's noted in the 2011 report by that DAB. Um, but you have this one, it's still one precinct in the southwest dorms that has 2,500 people. It used to be larger than that, so they did fortunately um isolate it, but it's still such a dense area. Um, and you can also see here some of the geometries that it's surrounded by these little tiny census blocks, um some of which have zero population. And just for comparison, if you look at the snapshot on the right, it shows that this is Amherst Center which have more uniform census blocks, but there, some of them are close to the same size as um the ones on the left, but the populations are much smaller in range. Um, next slide, please. So, you know, some of the other challenges, we saw that of these 423 census blocks, some of the geometries are really difficult to work with, like we encountered a number of situations such as on that left snapshot that where you have these isolated census blocks where it can only be connected to the ones around it. And then in the la, the other two, one of the things, one way that the census likes to define the boundaries of census blocks is by roadway central lines. But what that can mean sometimes is that will cut a neighborhood because it will say, for example, if you had a cul-de-sac, or in this case, so the one that's being shown here, this is Rolling Green and Echo Hill. So basically, you know, Rolling Green is a large affordable housing complex, and then it's adjacent to Echo Hill. But what this shows is that you have one census block which covers the area inside of the Rolling Green driveway, and then one outside. The other thing that this, in this case, that makes it difficult is it means that um you know, if you wanted to do some analysis, when the richer census data comes out with incomes and household types and renters, owners, and all that types of data, we couldn't actually isolate Rolling Green and say, what's the data say for Rolling Green? Because it's tied into these two different blocks, one of which has a lot of section to Echo Hill. Um, and another example of that is just in North Amherst, north of UMass, where this is um North Village and all the complexes over there. Again, the census blocks are split by the central lines of quote roadways, but for the most part, they're driveways inside the complexes. So again, it's hard to look at some of that data. Um, so, so as we are working, you know, what we were all doing is um Mike Warner had created this fabulous uh mapping tool, which was on our website, available to the public as well, and allowed people to pick and choose blocks as they were building districts or precincts. And so we did, as Irene said, we did spend quite a bit of time, but most of the members spent time in this tool building different uh districts and precincts that would meet the requirements. And so these are some of the variations of the maps that we came up with. Um, just trying to make sure that everything is balancing. I think for the most part, these all do meet that 4,000 requirement, because as you can see, they look pretty different. So, you know, in the end, go ahead. Um, so in the end, we ended up, so on the right is the current map, and on the left is the proposed map. And that was the one that we settled on at our meeting. Um, of the three finalist maps that we were looking at, one of the maps had the same general precincts, but a different configuration of districts. And um, and I will let my fellow member Peggy Shannon speak to why we chose the map we chose. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, next slide, Irene. So I want to tell you the reasons that we're recommending this particular map. Um, first up is that uh the precincts and the districts meet state requirements. Here are two tables showing statistics for our current precincts on the left and our proposed precincts on the right. Um, as Tracy said, eight out of 10 of our current precincts require adjustment, um either because they have more than 4,000 residents, or the difference from the average is greater than 5%. Those numbers are shown in pink. Thank you. Um, all of the proposed precincts have a population, um, all the proposed precincts in the uh proposed map have a population of under 4,000 and are easily within the 5% variance. Next slide. Um, this is also true for the districts. Um, the districts we made by pairing adjoining precincts, um and they also meet the state requirements. On the left are our current districts, on the right are proposed. Um, and as Tracy said again, the current districts 3 and 5 violate state requirements. 3 has 1,000 residents too many, and 5 has 1,000 too few. All of our proposed districts on the right are within the regulated population range, and as I said, are made up of contiguous precincts, so they meet state regulations. All right, next slide. So the next few reasons um involve equity. Um, redistricting happens, and it happens every 10 years in order to ensure access to the vote and equal representation. So equity is at the core of this process. Um, the current Amherst districts do not provide equal representation. Um, you can see that on this table. The three columns on the left are the distribution of voters in the current districts. So now we're talking about voters, not residents, um per se. Um, you can see that there is a large disparity, um particularly between Districts 3 and 5. District 3 has between 700 and 800 voters, while District 5 has over 3,300 voters. So my vote in District 5 has less than one quarter of the weight of Tracy's vote in District 3. Once we had precincts that met state requirements, we started focusing on the voter distribution in the districts and saw that the current pairing of precincts led to an even greater disparity than the one that's shown here. Um, so we knew we needed to change the pairings of some of the precincts um to the new pairings, uh and those are what are shown in the fourth column. Uh, this new pairing resulted in a more equitable distribution of voters. So let's just look at that for a moment. The precinct pairs, um the fourth column there, whoever's doing the pointer, um. Yeah, so, so District 1, oh, and let me just take a moment. We are now regretting on the DAB that we didn't call the districts A, B, C, D, and E. Um, we think that would have caused a lot less confusion, and actually going forward, we're gonna recommend that the map that goes to the state have names for the districts that are not numbers. But, but we didn't do that for this map, so we'll keep the numbers for now. Um, the precinct pairs in District 1 are 1 and 3, same as they have been, and in District 2 are 2 and 6, also the same. But Districts 3, 4, and 5 now have a different pairing, so so Precinct 4 is with Precinct 7, 9 is with 10, and 5 is with 8. And it's by switching that up that we were able to balance the number of voters much more evenly than they had been um previously, and, and that they would be if we kept the pairing the same as they are now. Next slide. Okay, um, the demographic data that we did get, which was um related to race, uh much more will be released later, but right now, all we have is the race data, um was also informed our choices in um the map that we chose. The data most relevant to that discussion right now is shown here. So there are two maps here. Um, the one on the left shows the density of black and African-American residents. White and yellow areas show a low density of blacks, green and then blue indicate increasing density. The right map uses the same scale to show Latinx or Hispanic residents. So these maps are really helpful in getting a sense of where people live and, and who our neighbors are. Um, initial training materials from the state included information about diluting minority strength, voting strength. So this is an important consideration to us. One type of dilution called fragmentation, also known as cracking, um is when minority neighborhoods, and in Amherst's case, this would be BIPOC neighborhoods, are dispersed into different electoral districts. We made sure that none of the largest BIPOC communities were isolated in a district. Instead, we initially clustered them, North Amherst neighborhoods in District 1, Village Park, Colonial Village, and Rolling Green in District 2, and the West Amherst neighborhoods in District 3. Next slide. So these maps are exactly the same as the, the slide before. No, no, I want, I do want that. Different text. So another example of fragmentation given by the state is when a minority community is located in a district in which their votes are overwhelmed by the rest of the district. So this has been the case, actually, um in particular for our BIPOC, our largest BIPOC neighborhood, that on East Hadley Road, located in District 5. So you'll remember that District 5 has many more voters than any other district. Um, so with the change in precinct pairing mentioned before, done to balance voters, this neighborhood, the one on East Hadley Road, will now be located in a district with far fewer voters than it currently is. So moving the communities on the west side of Amherst to District 3, along with clustering the other neighborhoods together, um those two things follow state guidelines, increases the BIPOC voice, and is more equitable than the current map. Okay, next slide. So the last reason I'm gonna present right now um has to do with retaining um previous districts and precincts. Um, some members of our committee and some public commenters felt that minimizing, minimizing changes to the precincts and districts would be preferable to making wholesale changes. And you saw that, that that was one of our priorities in the beginning. The proposed map moves fewer residents than other options we explored. Turns out that 82% of residents remain in the same precinct, and 61% remain in the same district with our proposed map. For active voters, the numbers are 78% that remain in their precinct and 67% in their district. So, the proposed map meets state regulations, increases electoral equity, and maintains the precinct and district locations for majority of residents. Next slide. So what happens next? The town is required to submit an approved map along with supporting documentation to the state by October 29th. Actually, it sounds like it has to be in the mail by October 28th. That's a week from Thursday. So the next step is for the council to vote on Monday, a week from today, on this map. If approved and submitted, the LEDRC, which stands for Local Election District Review Committee, will then hold a public meeting to review, review the map. We are confident that once it, once it is approved by the Town Council, it will also be approved by the LEDRC, because shortly before our committee voted on our final proposal, we showed State Election Division staff the maps under consideration at that time, and they saw no substantive, substantive issues with them. So we are confident. If the town does not submit an approved map by the deadline, the state may choose to create and implement its own map instead. We have an idea of the difficulty the state would have, um, next slide, in creating a map for us, since the state does the redistricting for most of the towns and cities in Amherst. Actually, Amherst is unusual in that we do our own. They sent us a map to aid us in the process. They were unable to create a 10 precinct map that met state regulations. Um, and so instead, they sent us an 11 precinct map. However, their 11 precinct map would violate the town charter. So it is entirely unclear what sort of map would emerge if we left it to the state. Um, so we are urging the Town Council to approve the proposed map. Next slide. Um, I just want to end by putting out a big thank you to our three non-voting members, Sue Ardet, Mike Warner, and Dimitri Shabazz. They were all three of them professional, insightful, and very helpful for that throughout this whole process. Um, I'd also like to thank Amherst Media and the members of the public for their feedback. Next slide. So there are some reference materials here. Um, we can leave this slide up, but um, or we can move to the next, which just says that we are ready for questions and comments. And thank you.
I think we'll ask people to take the slide down so that we can first engage in uh council comments. We're then going to go to uh audience comments, and we'll come back for any final council comments. Again, Again, we do not vote on this until next Monday, the twenty-fifth, at a meeting that is devoted to just this and one other item. So are there council comments at this time? Kathy?
I want to thank the committee. I both, what we just saw in the presentation and what I thought was a very clear report, made it clear to me what a challenging task this was between the census, giving us boundaries that may or may not make sense in terms of census, and then trying to live within what we have to within the charter in terms of districting. I think they've done a remarkable job. And when I looked at earlier variations, I thought what had happened is they moved Evermore to a map that makes sense. As a counselor from the north, from North Amherst, the North Amherst, the new district one lines, the changes in marginal changes in district three, precinct three and precinct one, both make sense. They're pulling neighborhoods together that were split before. As I knocked on doors, if I turned to the right or the left, I either hit district two or I was in district one in, in odd ways. So I think they pulled some neighborhoods together and, and helped distribute the student populations. And for those of people who are listening, where the students are living, even if they're registered to vote in Amherst, we often can't go on their property. We can't talk to them and they don't vote in the town election, as you can see from the numbers. So it's not that we wouldn't want them to, they're just not accessible. So I think distributing them the way this is done. So I want to give a big shout out to what I think was yeoman's work in a very compressed time period. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start the clock again, George.
Yeah, I just first to echo Kathy's comment. This is an extraordinary labor that unfortunately, a full compliment was never able really to be gathered. So it was, the burden was carried by a smaller group than we had hoped. But they've done extraordinary work. And the argument that they present is a pretty compelling one. And the equity argument in particular is one that resonates with me. It's not so much a complaint, it's just an observation. As a resident of precinct four and as someone who lives on Dana Street, when I look at the map, it, you know, the, the proposed map, with all the good reasons behind it, it does seem to, to leave my neighborhood, which has strong ties to the downtown, sort of out in the, in the cold, in a sense. And I think perhaps that's going to just have to be the way it is. But I just can't help but note that, that that connection and that sort of neighborhood sense of connection to the downtown, for those of us south and west of Amity, is, is going to be an issue. I'd kind of hope that somehow North Hampton Road could be used as the dividing line, which is, I think, a more natural neighborhood divider. But I understand the constraints, which were quite extreme. And I applaud the, the effort that you all made. It's, it was, it's impressive. Thank you.
Evan?
Yeah, so I again want to just echo my gratitude for this committee for working through a very complicated issue in a very short timeframe. And I also want to really thank them for prioritizing equity and racial equity. And, and I agree with the decision that was made with regard to the apartments on East Hadley Road and pulling them away from the current precinct eight. I think that was a really good move. That said, I am really troubled by the way active voters were used in this and the way that students were discounted. The fact that students don't vote in a local election should have no bearing on their representation or the fact that we are diluting their, their voice with this map. And I'm really troubled. I am encouraged by the way we attempted to not dilute minority voices and yet we very intentionally tried to dilute student voices. I showed the report to a, a student who was very interested in politics and he looked at some of the statements about it and said, "It sounds like they're trying to suppress our vote." And I think that the use of active voters, I don't quite understand. We don't use active voters when we are dividing up state districts. We don't do it when we divide up congressional districts. And in fact, it's been a long-term Republican goal to use active voters to do congressional apportionment because that dilutes the votes of minority communities, low-income communities, and especially immigrant communities who can't vote. And so I, I really need a better explanation about why, in this case, we feel it's appropriate to use active voters when it come, when, when we look at congressional apportionment and we look at state apportionment, we don't use active voters, we use population. Because I think that this is a problem. I think the fact that we identify that forty-one percent of our population is just on-campus UMass students and so we want to crack that population as opposed to empower that population is a problem. I think that, given the amount of students in our community, we would want to create a pathway for there to hopefully be a student representative on the council someday, and it seems like this works against that goal. So I really need a better explanation about why we should be considering active voters because that goes against everything I've ever seen as far as democratic ideals. And it seems to align more with what Republicans have tried to do on a national level. So I need more explanation on that because I, I'm not, and I'm not really not thrilled at some of the way that student voices were discarded, especially in the report. I think if I was a student reading the report, I'd be frankly, a little bit offended at some of the things that were said. So really encouraged by what was done on the racial equity front, really discouraged by the way students are treated in this report.
I'm going to, we're going to collect comments and then have those addressed. Shalini?
Yes, I also want to thank the work of the committee and, and also to Peggy for coming to district five meeting. And one of the questions that was raised there was when the change happens next year and the elections are happening this year, I think that's, I don't know who's supposed to answer that question, but will it change the counselors who were voted in, in particular districts next year when the precincts and districts change?
Shalini, we did get a legal opinion on that and we will have it discussed later.
Okay, thank you.
Mandy Jo?
Yes, thank you. Again, I know how much hard work went into this and how hard it is, especially in the UMass area, to create a district of approximately eight thousand people. Because I played with maps that were publicly available to try and do it myself. So I know exactly what you guys were up against, how picking one census block and moving it from one district to another just screws up lines three districts away. But as with Evan, it sounds like, well, the report reads and the presentation reads that the DAB deliberately discriminated on the basis of age. And that is younger people were deliberately put into as many districts as possible so that their voting power would be diluted. And I want to know whether that's even legal because age is a protected class, just like other things. And I would love to see a legal opinion to see whether that's even possible because I have massive concerns that we are deliberately disempowering forty-one percent of our population with this map. Especially how the districts were done. And I only look at districts because precincts are, voting precincts are just where you vote. It's the districts that matter. I am concerned that the district advisory board did not actually consider the requirement in the charter to quote, "Each of the five districts, five districts shall consist of as nearly an equal number of inhabitants as it is possible to achieve and shall, to the extent possible, cluster together centers of common interest or neighborhoods, considering places where people live, congregate, recreate, worship, shop, and learn." The Charter Commission put the word "learn" in there specifically for our undergraduate populations and university and institutional populations. Legal question on timing. The legal opinion that came in today indicates that we might have until, until December fifteenth to actually forward this to the state, not October thirty-first, which makes a huge difference if we don't have to vote this by October twenty-fifth. So I'd like a clarification on that because if we vote this by October twenty-fifth, KP Law's opinion quoted general law of chapter fifty-four, section four, that states in part, "All regular municipal elections held after the, it's been re-divided, must do the new divided map." If we adopt October twenty-fifth, our next election is November second. So I think we need more clarification on that. And I do second, before I run out of time here, the change to, but I would number the districts and name the precincts A and B in each district, just like North Hampton, Springfield, Worcester, all of the cities do. District one, two, three, four, five, precinct A, precinct B in each of the districts because that will be more clear.
Thank you, Mandy Jo. Dorothy?
I'm looking at this, obviously, from a different place. I'm very happy that the local history district neighborhood was kept together. And tonight I learned that minority, predominant minority neighborhoods have been kept together so as not to dilute their vote. But when I looked at new district four with precincts nine and ten, what I saw was a huge group of UMass belonging to, to the new district four. So to me, that was actually giving more power to the student vote because they were being brought together. I mean, that's what I see when I look at the map. So obviously, other people are seeing something else. I don't understand how they're doing it. Are we talking about area or numbers of active voters? There's a flaw that we found out that students changed their dorms in the summer and the lists are put together. So if you take a look at the new list of voters, you'll see that in one of the precincts that I, I think it's precinct nine, there are almost no students listed. If the students register in time for the election, there will be a lot of students voting. They're, they have to be registered for the election. To the, and we, I didn't make these rules, to the exact dorm room that they would be living in at the time. I find that overly strict myself. So I do not see a disenfranchisement of students in this map. It looks good to me because I saw the previous, five or six previous maps. And so many of them were so seriously flawed that each time I saw the map, it was better. And I just have to say, thank Tracy and the committee for having worked so hard and creating maps which are, I think, as, about as good as we're going to get. So I am really praising your work. So thank you very much.
Andy?
Well, I also want to thank the committee for outstanding work in a very difficult timeframe. When it was originally devised in the charter, they would have had much more time, but the census delayed getting the numbers to them to work with and put a tremendous amount of pressure on it. I think we have to appreciate what they did. I guess that, you know, and the topics we're talking about, the one thing that really did, in the end, convince me that a lot of thought had been given to the issue that we've been most talking about, which is thinking about active voters, is when you go to, and I'm not suggesting we do it now, but if you go to the slide deck we just looked at, which we all look in our packets, page eighteen, the, the difference between district three with seven hundred and thirty-three voters and district five with three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight voters kind of reminds me of the arguments about the Senate versus the House of Representatives. And the discrepancy in the number of voters by district, I think, is something that we should be taking very seriously. I am concerned about the students, so I'm going to leave my comments with the question, knowing that Sue Ardet is here. And that is that splitting up the student population on campus in the way we have, I worry about it disenfranchising voters because of the difficulty of voting on election day. And the one thing that could help is an assurance that early voting on campus will be a possibility in all future elections if this is adopted so that any student in any residence hall has opportunities to vote on campus in a very easy to access, inconsistent manner. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Darcy?
Yes, I would very much endorse the suggestion that Andy just made. I, I also want to thank the committee for a very thorough report. Your presentation was very impressive. I find it sad to cut our district five in half, but I understand the reasoning behind this proposal. And I see that it would empower especially our BIPOC communities. And I think there's no way to perfectly solve this problem, the problem of trying to sort out the student communities. But I do feel like it's been a problem that district five currently includes one-third of our active voters instead of one-fifth. And that disempowers the voters in district five. So that is a problem that this map does help to remedy. It isn't perfect, but it helps a lot.
Okay, Mandy Jo?
I just wanted to add one more thing about neighborhoods. This map splits southwest dorms into two completely different precincts. That's a problem in my mind because that is a neighborhood unto itself. It's not two different precincts, it's not just two different precincts, it's two different districts. One half of southwest dorms would vote in district three and the other half would vote in district four. That is not keeping neighborhoods together. And I know there were ways to draw maps that could keep all of southwest dorms into the same precinct that then could have gone into multiple different districts.
Kathy?
Just a quick comment. They, they chose active, the choice of active voters, I don't think was to disenfranchise voters. I think it was to recognize that we have, that our count of residents does not even necessarily reflect registered voters, people who are registered to vote in Amherst. When I knocked on doors recently for this coming election in my neighborhood, many of the homes had no registered voters in them. They were still registered in the town they lived in. And this was a student population in the neighborhoods. So I think we, when you look at the turnout, we get these turnout numbers at the end of every election and say, a huge number turnout in district five and fewer turnout. And that's when people register, they often vote in the state election, but they don't vote in the town election. I would love for students to get more active, Evan. And if we had a way to reach students and tell them what the issues are, it would be even better. So, but I think what, what's been done with this map, we moved thousands of people when we moved lines a little bit. And the, I don't know why the state said four thousand per precinct. And I don't know how many, whether it was this century or last century, why not five thousand? But these were rules that were set that confined every decision. So I, I think, again, I think the committee was living within a bunch of boxes that sometimes, to me, don't make sense. But you were bumping against the wall of a box if you went one way or the other and erring on the side of what they've done with the equity on race. And they didn't have, I asked about income. They don't have income dif, information. Census hasn't released it yet, so we can't even do an income. Let's look at below average and above average. They just, we just don't have that information. That's all I want to say.
Evan?
Yeah, so I actually had another thing, I just ran out of time. But I do just want to point out this, I, I need to hear a better explanation for active voters because I think conversations that have happened at a national level, our folks say, well, non-citizen immigrants, undocumented immigrants don't vote and so they shouldn't be considered when drawing districts. And we have rejected that as a country and as a state. But why is it that at the local level, we're saying, "Well, students don't vote in elections, so, you know, we really don't have to take them into consideration." I think if we were saying, "Well, non-citizen immigrants don't vote, so we can do the same thing," we would be outraged by that statement, rightfully so. But when it's students, for some reason, we don't have an issue. And, you know, when we say, "I wish students could get more active." Well, this isn't going to make them more active. This is going to work against that. But the other thing that I did want to bring up is the idea of, of keeping neighborhoods together. We had an email from a public commenter that praised the maps because they kept North Amherst. And one of the reasons was because they kept North Amherst Village Center together. But one thing I did notice is that the downtown Amherst is now split into, I think, three different districts, depending on how you define the downtown. East Amherst Village Center is split into three different districts. Pomeroy Village is split into two different districts. And so I guess I'm just sort of curious, when we were trying to group neighborhoods, it does seem like, with the exception of North Amherst, which made it through whole, the other three major village centers that we talk about, downtown, East Amherst, and Pomeroy, were split into several districts. And I'm especially a little bit concerned about East Amherst being in three different districts. And so I, I'd also like to hear. how that fits into sort of keeping neighborhoods together. Because I'm sure there's a reason, and I understand this is complicated, and I fully, I'm not trying to be overly critical. But I just want to make sure I understand how some of these decisions were made. Because when I looked at this, my first thought was, oh, wow, we're really splitting village centers into different districts. And that did seem to conflict with keeping neighborhoods together.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask for public comment. We will come back and have an opportunity for additional counselor comment. Alyssa, you just popped your hand up.
I was waiting to see if what you were doing next. I'll be happy to wait until after public comment.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to turn to public comment. Ask those people who have, would like to make public comment to raise their hand. I have three at this point. We are going to limit public comment to three minutes per person, just as we have done counselors. And so Amy, I'm going to start with Amy Mittelman. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Amy Mittelman. I live on 33 Columbia Drive. I'm currently in precinct five, District Four. The first thing I want to say is, I know you tried to get people from District Four to be on the DAB, but since they weren't, I don't feel that this was a completely representative process. My question is, when does this ask that at the same presentation that was given at the current District Five meeting? My concern is, the sense I get, and if I'm wrong, I would be happy to hear this, is that I, currently in precinct five, District Four, will be voting for counselors. And in a year, those people will not be my counselors. And that feels completely undemocratic to me. And if there is a way to postpone this going into effect or to do something so that people voting in like three weeks get to keep their counselors for two, the two years, the two-year term that people believe they're voting for their counselors for, I would, I really think that that's what should happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Maria Kapacki, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Maria Kapacki. I live in South Amherst. I want to preface my comments by saying that this is not meant to be in any way a critique of the work of the Districting Advisory Board. As a decadal process, the need for redistricting was not exactly a surprise. Why the town council and town manager did not constitute a committee and provide it and the public with all the necessary historical data and guidelines well before this summer is incomprehensible and maddening. It also recalls their failure to anticipate and deliver on the campaign promise of ranked choice voting in time for the upcoming local election. There was a great deal of background knowledge that should have been digested and clarification sought so that when the new census numbers were made available, the Districting Advisory Board could have been better positioned to complete this important work. However, the DAB, as hard as they have worked these past few months, was never going to be able to solve the puzzle of redefining voting precincts in a way that provides equal representation. The reasons are many, but a fundamental problem is that the current system of government is not compatible with a town so dominated by a university that doubles the number of residents who, very understandably, largely do not participate in local elections. There are two basic approaches to the problem, given the limitations of the current charter. One, have two of the five districts comprised largely of undergraduate students. Or, two, create redistricts that divide the large student population as evenly as possible among the five districts. The first option is pretty much what we have now. Four district counselors get elected with a couple hundred votes and represent 20% of voters. And another four counselors represent 60% of actual voters. One could create districts comprised entirely of students, but this, of course, runs the likelihood of having no one willing or able to serve for those areas. This is already a problem, as six out of 10 current district counselor races are uncontested, giving those residents no choice in who represents them on that level. The second option requires very elongated districts that all converge with UMass at the center and extend to the perimeter of town. It's my understanding that this option was studied but rejected as being unlikely to be approved by the council and not clustering inhabitants enough. The only way is to ensure equal representation in a town like ours, given such an uneven geopolitical distribution and a city council form of government, is to have either all at-large seats or a larger number of smaller districts, each with a single representative to more closely represent residents with similar interests. The DAB was given a Gordian knot, but they don't wield the sword needed to cleave it. As long as we have the current charter, with its highly unusual two district counselors for each of five disparate districts, there is no solution. The best that can be done at the moment is to nibble at the edges of unequal representation and hope for a future that looks a lot different than our present. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jennifer Taub, please enter the room and state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. Jennifer Taub, 259 Lincoln Avenue. So I'm currently running for, I'm a candidate for town council from District Three, where we have a number of freshman dorms. The dorms in District Three are primarily freshmen. It certainly makes my life a lot easier as a candidate to, you know, be running for office where there's only 750 or so active voters. I have many fewer blocks to walk than, you know, my counterparts in District Five. But what puzzles me about trying to protect as such the students in, at least in District Three, where there's freshman dorms, is when I handed in my signature sheets, like the first week in September, I was given a book, The Voter List Book. The book was printed before any of the students had moved into the freshman dorms in the district. So I literally, if I wanted to campaign in, like, Southwest residential, I don't even have names of who lives there, let alone access to get in. And so again, it's one thing maybe freshman, for students who want to get involved, you know, as they get into their freshman year or when they're upperclassmen. But I don't think the first things freshmen do when they get to college is register to vote in a local election and then, you know, go about getting smart about who's running in their local town council. So I think it's kind of a a bit of a false concern here in terms of District Three, where we're really talking about freshmen. Because I think I'm just finding it very challenging to reach that segment of our district population at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Adrienne Terese, please enter the room, state your name.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lynn and counselors. First, first a comment to this extraordinary District Advisory Board. I served on one 10 years ago. Back then, we did not have the kind of IT help and the extraordinary back background for the making of the 20-some-odd maps that I was able to follow. Yes, with all of the digital assistance available to this current DAB, my hat's off to them. Because yes, while we had timelines and time crunches 10 years ago, we also have a new charter. And that new charter created a great number of additional complications for the DAB. Back then, we were only dealing with precincts. Today, we have a change population. So it was in a matter of trying to be contiguous, compact, and keeping those communities of interest together, that I think the work of the DAB was extraordinary, and I thank you for it. Now, with one comment, with a question. My concern is centered on District Five. Why, what was your rationale for separating our village center between two districts? And secondly, could you explain or help us understand why, given your rejiggering of District Five, that you put the two precincts together that still compel an almost 1,000 difference in the number of active voters, which is likely to still create problems for the next local election?
Thank you, thank you, Adrian. Mary Sayer, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Mary Sayer, District One. And I want to congratulate the committee on their work, because I think that they had very little time to do it in. And there were many complicated and competing issues. And when you have that kind of situation, some issues won't be able to be addressed as well as others. And I just have to give them a lot of credit for doing what they managed to do in the time they had. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments at this time? See none. I'm closing public comment, going back to the council. And I want to pause for a moment and see if there are various responses to some of the questions that have been raised. And I'm going to ask Irina if we want to start with her, and then if there are other members of the committee, including the non-voting members.
Point of order?
Yes.
So we're not going to do additional council questions now? We're going to wait until after they answer? Sorry, I know it's confusing.
I was looking for one round of answers and then going back to the council yet again. But if you have another question, please go ahead.
I thank you. I appreciate that. So just as some other people did, I have also concerns that about some of the same things. But I do want to mention a couple of things in response to all the things we're hearing here. One is, we specifically don't do all at-large, because that's a system that ends up with all white town counselors, as has been found in other Massachusetts communities. So that's why the charter's not written that way. So doesn't matter, because it's not written that way. One of the concerns I have about the body that has worked so hard in this really compressed timeframe is that we put two students on the appointed body and both had significant attendance issues, even though all the meetings were on Zoom. So it would be helpful to know in the future how to better accommodate student members on future committee appointments. Is that something that maybe the DAB can report to us off? You know, there's a separate little memo as they're leaving, because they did have this very compressed timeframe, which meant that there were very few people to do all this work. And so really appreciate that so many people had to do all of that. The numbering of districts and precincts, I agree with Mandy Jo's theory on that. I'm concerned that we're focusing a little bit too much on where people vote, because where people vote is going to continue to change. And so I understand the tension between precincts and districts is very different than it was 10 years ago. But I also don't want to focus on, well, what's important to me is that I get to vote the same place people voted 25 years ago. That's not really the important issue here. In terms of early voting on campus, since that was something I championed for the first time in 2016, I agree that we need to make a permanent commitment to doing that, because that does make a difference. I want to just point out that the reason students don't vote is a multifaceted problem, but it isn't because we can't knock on their doors. Knocking on doors is not the only way to run for office. It's an important way to run for office, but I find it really offensive to say that students can't be reached by knocking on their doors. Therefore, oh, well, throw up our hands. We can't do anything with them. And I can also tell you for a fact that students have been told by our poll workers in the past that they did not need to take both ballots when they, when we were running a local election at the same time as the other. I will tell you that for a fact, because I witnessed it. And I reported it to the town clerk at the time. So there are lots of reasons there, but we don't want to oversimplify what those reasons are. Again, we had some students on the committee. Unfortunately, we didn't get much of their perspective. The other thing I want to be clear on is I really appreciate the DAB giving us our report last week and then the presentation earlier today. The legal opinion that was mentioned came in at 6:15 this afternoon. I don't know who could possibly have read it since 6:15 this afternoon. So that will be helpful for us to get to after we answer the other questions.
Dorothy?
I just want to add a little piece of information. Knowing I couldn't knock on doors, I did a mailing. We handed dressed envelopes. I had to put first-class postage, because we can't use every door direct or bulk mail to the university. You guys saw that first six months of the council, every single meeting I came to, I would got back a whole stack of letters. Almost none of them reached the students. The way the mail goes, if you don't have the exact correct student apartment number, it doesn't get delivered, it does not get delivered by dorm. So I tried mailing. I did the work. I did the, spent the money. And those literature did not get to the students. So it's a very big problem. You know, we can't just hang around on campus waiting to see people. I stood outside of the early voting, and I wanted to engage in students in conversation. Today, young people do not walk with their face up, waiting to greet people. They walk with their phone in their hand, and they're not available. And I, you know, it was, let alone, I mean, what if I do knock them over? I mean, it's serious. We have a problem reaching the students. And I think that we found out that they will vote in major elections. But their first concern when they move in on campus is not to run to vote in a local election where they don't even know what the issues are, because they've been so busy getting to know the college. So I think we have to deal in reality. That's it.
Okay, George?
Well, since we're sharing personal experience, I guess I'll share mine. I've been to campus three times now, and I may go back another time, maybe even a fifth time. And I use the old-fashioned method. I just go up and talk to them. I probably spend about six hours outside, either the Commons or in the Commonwealth College area, sometimes by myself and sometimes with someone else. And Dorothy, I hate to tell you this, but if you do actually approach a student, 95% of the time, in my experience, and it's a lot of experience now, they do talk to you. They're engaging. They're interesting. I tell them a little about the council. I share with them what I've been doing. I tell them about the challenges, which are absolutely real, what have been mentioned by a number of people this evening are very real. This is a population that changes almost every year. And that creates real problems. But there is an old-fashioned way of doing this. You just go there and you talk to them. Since 70% of the voters currently in our district are your students, I felt at least I should make some effort to actually go and talk to them. I grant you, it's a real challenge. But the way I find it works is actually going up to them, even with their phone in hand and even with their earphones. They do stop and they do talk, and they're actually quite delightful.
Kathy?
I'll make it very short. You know, George, I agree. You know, it takes effort. I just hung out of bus stops and did groups. And I think I personally helped increase the turnout in District One by quite a bit, because I know the students did turn out when I could reach them. It's just an issue, I think, we haven't figured out yet. But early voting, doing more, I think, is what we're all talking about. So I don't think we're undercounting them. We have a huge student population in District One, many of whom are registered in Amherst, but not all are registered in Amherst. So I think we're not undercounting them. We just have to get them to vote. So I think this map doesn't dilute it very much. It's just that there is going to be the challenge of how, and how to get activate. And Alyssa's question about, even when we activate, participate on the committee, getting the commitment to be there, it's, students have lives. I'm not saying that they're, and I got them to talk about their senior thesis, that we had all these wonderful projects in Amherst. We were the first council. Give me a topic and I can give you a project. So it was fun.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments or questions at this time before I provide Irina and the rest of the committee to respond to questions that have been raised? Dee, are you raising your hand to answer a question? Dee, you have your hand up.
Oh, no, just whenever we're, I guess you're going to let us speak.
I am. I'm going to start with Irina, and then we'll go to other members of the committee, including Dee, who have raised their hand. Irina?
Yes, Dee?
Yes, so are we able to speak now? Is that the committee?
Yes, I'm going to go to Irina as chair of the committee first, and then on to the other members of the committee, including you, Dee.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Irina?
Yes. Sorry. So there are many questions and I think there are some people out there in the committee that might be able to answer some of these questions better than I. Sue can talk about voter registration and vote turnout by students. One thing I want to clarify, we built the precincts based on residents. We didn't build the precincts based on active voters. All that we did that was afterwards, maybe on, on the assignment, even that was if people watch our meetings, that was we look at the active voters only at the end of our meetings. But when we built precincts, we were looking at Amherst residents. That I want to be clear when we did these maps. We have two members in the committee that are students and we talked to them regarding the issue about student participation and how they're distributed in the town. And I think Maria Copicki put it very clearly, there, there is no clear solution of, or how to include students or in the precinct thing and the redistricting. We could have created a full district or more than one district that is just students. These are students that in fact, one of the maps had one, only one precinct, but we could have created a full district is only students. This was something we did not go that route. But just to clarify, there are different alternatives. We went with what has been done in the past and the living. It's not diluted. And I want to apologize if we use the word diluted in our report. This is distribute and so that all voices can be heard. I think that one, I want to clarify. We can kind of let Mahak, she's here. Joseph would not be here, talk about students, how students feel with this map as the members on our panel. And I don't know. I think I want to let other people in the committee because this has been a committee work. It's not my voice and I want to let other people work, talk that are in the in the council, in the district, in advisory board. So Dee, I see all the members have their hands raised.
Right. Let's just go in the order that people have their hands up. Dee, why don't we go with you first? Please unmute.
Yes, hello. So it's good to know that potentially there'll be more time. I am representing the Board of Registars and therefore the voters, I feel, in the community as an observer and non-voting member. And what I think is important to understand that this group, this, this small but dedicated group did their due diligence. They did their homework. They looked at previous iterations of this committee. And they based their decisions, they based their, their decisions on what was allotted by the state, what was required by the state. This kind of red herring that they were discriminated against the students is just not so. What they were looking at were the, the resident numbers that the census provided in 2020, as imperfect as it has been critiqued, not only for this town, but for other towns. And those numbers are based on residents in the dorms. That needs to be clear because that type of narrative going forward, I think is, is really damaging to the great work that this group put in. Lastly, about the students, I do believe there is an issue in terms of this town, both wanting the students to participate, but doing nothing to educate the students on local issues, local elections to get the students involved. And so I really feel that is a very contradictory position to state upfront that, well, we're discriminating against the students and how this is assembled. Yet we do very little in terms of, and I'm not saying individuals don't, but as a town, to get the students involved in local and even state and national elections. So again, thank you to this group, the, the DAB. They did an awesome job.
Thank you, Dee.
Lynn, can I ask a favor? Could Mahak talk first? Because I know she had told me that she might have to go to a class.
Absolutely. Mahak?
Thank you.
Please unmute.
Yeah, thank you so much, Irene, for letting me speak earlier. So as a student myself, I think I'd like to bring this up because many people have been talking about the issue of the southwest dorm area being divided. One of the biggest issues is that students don't really live there for more than a year. So many of these dorms are freshman dorms and students in general, like myself, tend to move off campus after the first year or second year of college, which is also, I would say, a roadblock towards, you know, having some kind of uniformity in our voting pool in District One. So that was a factor that was taken into consideration while we worked on the maps at the district and advisory board. However, there's just no perfect way around this situation because the UMass population does keep growing and there will be new students that are admitted year on year. But with the data that we had at hand, this was our best effort towards creating some sort of equity and also abiding by the state guidelines. So yeah, that's all that I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you have to leave for class, we totally understand.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Tracy?
Hi, yes. I, I wanted to speak to, to the comment about the students. So just as the DAB is before us, like the 2011 DAB, if you look at their report, they talk about the southwest dorms and the challenges there and having census blocks that are almost as big as the maximum allowed population. I mean, we did. I mean, so that's always been an issue that you have these very, very dense areas. You know, there's 41% of the population that lives on such a small area of land. And so, I mean, I live in District Three and as has been discussed by the, the council representatives here for the district, I mean, that is a big part of our population. We did have some versions of our map that mainly had, like, for example, at least one section, you know, that basically that we would have a precinct that was entirely those southwest dorms with maybe like one other block that was like a very, very student oriented area. We just, we were struggling too because we knew that, you know, looking at this, I mean, we, we knew that looking at this election in terms of the the districts that were having challenges and finding candidates to run and so on. We just, we thought that having, you know, as people have brought up, we thought that having a district that was comprised primarily of a freshman dorm would be an issue. And so we struggled. I mean, we played with the maps a lot of times. You know, and we, the other thing is that, you know, there's a really, in my mind, there's, I mean, students are a really important part of this community. And so, you know, in no way did we intend to discriminate against students or discriminate on the basis of age. But it is challenging, particularly with the dorms and the students who live in dorms, students who are moving almost every year, compared to students who live in neighborhoods. Neighborhoods like in the surrounding community, the students, you know, as Kathy Shane said in her district, that a number of the students in those neighborhoods are registering to vote and do vote in local elections. Both of our student members said that the students in the dorms do not vote in the elections and most of them, and one of them, the one who wasn't here tonight, Joseph Gordon, said it was actually really challenging for him to register to vote in Amherst. I mean, maybe those are barriers that we can look to address. But, I mean, the fact that you have this population that moves every year, it, it's challenging to create districts around that. The other thing is with the question about inactive voters, and I, I hope that the town clerk can speak to this a little more. But Amherst has a large number of inactive voters. I don't know whether our percentage is larger than other municipalities or a state, national level. And Amherst, the latest statistics I saw showed that Amherst had about one-third of our voters are inactive voters. And as an election worker for over 20 years in Amherst, I know that people become inactive voters because for two main reasons, they don't return the town census and that they don't update their addresses. So one, one thing that the town clerk has mentioned to us, for example, is because students in the dorms move every year, they actually will become inactive. And I think that might even be tied to state law. She can speak to that more than I can. And they need to update their address to become active again. The other thing is because we have a student population, we have a population that lives in Amherst a short time and then moves out. And so the other thing with a lot of the inactive voters are that they don't live in Amherst anymore at all. I mean, I know that when I moved into my house, that I've now, you know, lived in a number of years, but for like a number, three or four years, the people who used to live in my house were still listed as inactive voters from my residence, right? They weren't living there anymore. So it's possible that we could have chosen. I mean, this was not a decision that we, we focused a lot on in terms of like, do we map? Do we geocode the active voters and inactive voters? But in my experience as an election worker, the, the whole registered voters, which is inactive plus active, is not necessarily the best measure either. Because again, you have people who don't live here. You have people who've moved to other parts of Amherst. And it's just really complicated. And particularly in areas where populations are moving a lot, you just see that a lot of people aren't there anymore. But I'm hoping that the town clerk can speak to that a little more. So, thanks.
Peggy, thank you, Tracy.
Lynn, we lost quorum. I think we have to adjourn our meeting of the DAB.
Okay, please go ahead and adjourn the meeting, but the people remain. No, the people will remain, but they need to adjourn their meeting because they no longer have a quorum.
Yes, we no longer have a quorum. So the DAB meeting is adjourning, but we're going to be answering our questions, the questions.
Thank you. Peggy?
Thank you. I have two quick comments on students and then I want to address a couple of the other questions that came in. One is when we're talking about the, the students that we are trying to distribute, we're talking about approximately 15,000 students that live in college housing. And I do not feel comfortable also painting them with one brush. I think that student population is also very diverse. And so I apologize if the language of the report suggested that we were trying to discriminate or break up a community of interest, but I don't think that the students as a community of interest is exactly right in this town because there are so very many compared to how many residents there are. So that. I also wanted to just point out that it isn't possible, or it isn't, it's probably possible. It's very difficult to draw a precinct of Southwest because Southwest itself is greater than 4,000 beds. And so we tried that actually in the beginning. We tried to keep a lot of Southwest together. And what happened is that we ended up breaking up the Lincoln Street neighborhood. And we got more comments about that neighborhood than any other neighborhood while, from the public. So we went to some trouble to keep that neighborhood together. And, and I think that what I'm just describing there kind of mirrors exactly what happened in the town, which is that when we tried to keep the students together, we ended up breaking up residents and neighborhoods or, or creating districts that had a real disparity in the number of people who are actually voting. And when we tried to balance the, the districts more that way, it ended up dispersing the students more. So this is just a tension with the constraints of the state requirements and the town charter and the geography of Amherst. There were a couple of other questions I wanted to address, one about village centers that came up often. What Tracy was saying about the census blocks and how the blocks are defined by center lines of streets. Also the center lines of the large streets in town, say South Pleasant Street or Northeast Street or whatever, those also tend to be defining streets for neighborhoods. So again, we have a, a little bit of a mutually exclusive problem here. If we're trying to contain a, a village center in one precinct or one district, that may mean that we end up cutting the neighborhoods around them as we draw a circle around that that village center. If we try to keep the neighborhoods together, it means that we end up drawing the precinct or district lines through the major intersections. And so again, that was a tension that we faced and we made the calls that we made.
Peggy, thank you. Sue? You have your hand up and
Yes.
Thank you for joining us after your training today.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you and nice to see everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to speak to a couple of things that Tracy had mentioned about how voters do become inactive. And she's right. Mass General Law states that we have to send out census forms each year and when we don't hear back, we send out confirmation cards a few months later, around May. We don't hear back, then MGL says that we need to inactivate the voter. So this is, has been a problem in our office since I've started. There's no solution, it seems, because students come in in September, get their new dorm assignments, maybe in August. And by that time, they've already, if they were here the prior year and they've moved, if they don't update their address themselves, they stay in inactive status. So, you know, that we end up having a very large quantity of inactive voters on the books compared to active voters. And then my other part in this, in this districting advisory board really was administrative and supplier of information. So I didn't really take part in the decision process. So, you know, the, the, somebody had asked, why do we look at just active voters? And I think it has already been answered, but I think that was part of the consideration. And I think that's it. I think, I think other people have already spoken to what I was going to say.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a moment if Paul, I know you received the opinion. Pat, can you wait or? Okay, so Paul, I know you received the opinion, but I also know that I have had previous conversations with Sue that are much more focused on these deadlines. And so I wondered if between you and Sue, we might get some clarity on that as well. So Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. So I think the October 30th was the original deadline from the spring, but then this legislature, and Sue can correct me on this if I'm wrong, passed additional, passed new legislation, Chapter 56, I think it is, which the, and what that basically says is that the, the legislature has to approve redistricting by the end of the calendar year. The Secretary of State's office has to submit it and it's no, no later than December 15th, but it's an iterative process. They, we submit what we have to the, the Secretary of State's office. And then they will come back to us and say, here's what, what you need to do different. It goes, or vice versa. Depends how it moves forward. So their recommendation is to do it as soon as possible. So there's time to, to have them review the information that the council is putting forward. So there's, I don't think there is, and I'm trying to get clarification. I don't have it yet from our town attorney, whether there is an actual October 30th deadline or if it is like, that's advisable to get something in front of the secretary's office as soon as possible. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Sue has better clarification on that.
Sue?
Well, when I was attending the town clerk conference a few weeks ago, Michelle Tassinari, who's our chief elections officer, said get things in as soon as possible because the state was drawing their lines. Of course, they've, they've drawn them now. But we're kind of like beating the state in. She, she wasn't. Hold on one sec. I've got an email from her and yeah, no, I don't have a clear, I don't have a clear answer. It's still kind of iffy. It just says this new legislation that the governor signed on October 4th. We still have to draw our lines, but we have no later than 30 days after the legislative districts are complete. So I don't know what that date is, but it is no later than December 15th, but we don't have that, that interim date in the middle. So no, I don't have that. So no, I don't have that.
Great. Clearly, we need to get clarification on that prior to Monday.
Lynn.
Yes, Irina.
On the package, on the material, on the package that they sent us. Late in the month and in communications that we had regarding. Legal boundaries with the state. The, the, when they send us the map, it says, they send us a map with eleven precincts that was a couple of weeks ago. It still said October thirtieth. I can share the document.
Right, that's fine. At this point, I, I'm not sure we're going to solve this to anybody's satisfaction. And Irina, I agree with you, everything I have seen is October thirtieth. And then there was this idea of a, a week and whatever. It, it gets very complicated. And Sue and I have been back and forth on that. Issue a couple of times. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up. I'm assuming it's related to this issue.
It is, it's a question. Because the general law I read said, quote, "All regular municipal elections and primaries held in any city. After it has been re-divided into wards or in, and into any districts for electing city officers. Shall be held in such city as re-divided." And so the question is, when is. The adoption of the new map. Count as having been re-divided? Is it when we vote as a council, or is it when. The state approves it and all? Because if it's when the state approves it, then I'm not as concerned about a vote on October twenty-fifth. But if it's when we vote, I don't think we can vote October twenty-fifth, because the next regular election after that vote is a week later. And, and that creates massive problems. So I think we need to clarify when that. When that map is officially adopted. Is it when we adopt it, or is it when something happens at the state after we send it to the state and. They do things.
Sue, did you want to add into that, please?
Yes, in our original handout from the state, it says clearly right in there that this will take effect December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, and the other question that I forwarded to the town councilor, to the town manager today. Had to deal with what happens as we proceed. And the response that we're presently working under is that. The districts that we call our districts, being a district two councillor, thank you very much. Are the districts that were our districts on the day that the vote occurred. And that that is how we proceed until the next election of the town council. So, Mandy Jo, does that answer your concern about that? Okay. So we still have to get clarification on the timeline. Are there any other issues that councillors would like to raise at this time? Andy.
Yeah, I just raised a question when I was speaking earlier for possibly Sue, and that is. Whether some of the student issued discussion that we were having can be solved by a permanent. Arrangement of early voting on campus to accommodate. The students who are divided into many different precincts.
Sue.
That's something I would, you know, be happy to have a conversation further. On, I would need to gather statistics just so that we would know turnout in the past, things like that. Just based on my memory of polling places at the precincts or, or over on the campus. There have been quite a few glitches that still need to work out, such as rooms being guaranteed. You know, to hold the voting in and then finding out that we can't have that space, or. There's no Wi-Fi connection, or, there's been a lot of different glitches, so. That would need to be a conversation between the university and the town, and it would have to be a guaranteed. And then also the cost, who, who would pay? You know, who, who would be covering the cost on this, so.
I think, Sue, what we're hearing is that we should have a further conversation on this, and it should be explored with the university.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Kathy.
Um, just a, a quick comment on what you said, Lynn, in answer to one of the questions we had tonight that the. Councillors people are voting on on November second will be their councillors until twenty-twenty-three. Can we put out a simple question and answer sheet so that if that occurs to other people who weren't listening tonight? We answer that question for people? You know, that, okay, just, just something simple, that's not a long report, you know. That, that's all I was going to suggest.
Yes, absolutely. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? I, I want to summarize something that I've heard from many people, and that is a huge statement of thank you. This has been a absolutely. An almost impossible task. When you're looking at districts where one block could change the count. And go over four thousand. It becomes almost impossible. This group, this committee has worked very, very hard. And I have attended a couple of your meetings and can only say. Each of you have spent enormous amounts of time drawing maps, coming up with ideas. And it's a committee that has had significant talent on it. We could not have been better served. In this timeframe by such a talented group of people, both. Voting members and the non-voting members on the committee. So I sincerely want to thank you. Alyssa, is there a final question or comment?
Yes, absolutely. And I don't think you'll be surprised to hear that I don't think any of us have any idea what's going to happen between now and next week. So what's going to happen between now and next week? Is the DAB going to go back and re-number some things like they suggested and like we suggested? We're going to find out if there's really the deadline, but who cares if we're fine with these maps if there's a later deadline. Because of the interpretations we've received about who's voting for what. In terms of the councillors, that, that confusion seems to have been laid to rest, so it doesn't really matter if we have extra time. If we're not, are we directing the DAB to change anything? I don't think the only, we are. I think the only thing we've asked them about. Is relabeling the precincts, because if they don't, we will. And so, but other than that, what is, what more information are we as a town council? What are we asking them to do before we vote next Monday?
I know that they are meeting on Wednesday. I know that we have asked, they have already stated that they plan to relabel. The districts and precinct, not the districts, but the precincts within districts. And that is the only change that I'm hearing thus far. However, I am sure that they will decide after hearing tonight's discussion, if there are any other things they need to do. Perhaps some edits to the report that reflect more of the process versus. Some of, some language that has been brought up. Otherwise, this will come before the council on the twenty-fifth, and we will clarify the deadlines before then. Alyssa, does that answer your question? Tracy, is there any concern, any question on your part? Not, I'm, I'm sorry. Irina, I, I lost you on the screen. Any question on your part?
No, I just want to make sure that the, the preference from the council is to name the, keep the new districts with numbers. And the precincts with letters.
I believe that's, that's what you've heard, yes.
Okay.
So it would be precinct, District One, A. Precinct and B precinct, and District Two, A precinct and B precinct.
Okay. Traditionally, we had stated, we had kept the numbers of precincts because districts had been only around for three years. Whereas prisons have been here for mid, since ever. So that's why we kept the number enough, we were. Going for keeping the prisons because traditionally residency numbers have been attached to the precincts. Numbers and less to the districts because they only have been around for three years. That was our reasoning of changing. The districts to letters and keeping the prisons because for historical reasons, but.
I think what you're hearing from us is that the district should be one through five, and each of them should have an A and a B precinct within it.
Okay.
Unless there's other councillors that are going to tell me they think differently. Okay? And Tracy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to just share with the council members that one of the things that the. DAB has been working on too is the legal descriptions of each of the precincts. So if, if it sounds as though, because those need to be approved by the state as well. And they're very detailed, particularly as you go through some of these dorm areas, and there aren't these nice delineations. Of roads and rivers and so on. So if there is any. If there is any feedback from the council that we would need to change anything, that would be helpful as we work on those. Districts, descriptions, so.
I don't, we had, nobody seemed to get into that issue, Tracy, but thank you for asking. Irina, did you still have your hand up?
No, I just wanted to, before we finish, I want to thank Mike Warner, especially he helped. By creating all the tools and making the tools available for everybody and being able to produce maps on a very short notice and overnight. I don't know how many nights, and apologize to his family because he has been doing an amazing job in the last two months and. So I want to especially thank him because he has worked round the clock on this for the last two months.
Irina, we join you in thanking him.
Thank you, everyone. That's very kind.
Are there any other comments at this time? Then I'm going to. Thank you for being with us. I'm going to have us take a break. We will reconvene at eight forty. And at that point, we'll take up our next agenda item. Okay, we're moving on to the tax classification, tax rate and exemptions. We have three motions, but before that, I just want to recognize that if there are any further questions. David Burgess is with us. He's the consultant to the Board of Assessors and our, our former chief assessor. Finance Director Sean Mangano, and also Kim and you are newly appointed principal assessor. Are there any questions before we move to the motions? Seeing none, I'm going to move then to the three motions that we have with regard to this. I'm looking for a second. To adopt a minimum residential factor of one equal tax rate for all classes of properties. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, and that no open space discount be granted. Is there a second?
Second, De Angelis.
Thank you. Is there any further question or discussion? Darcy.
Just want to make sure what I'm voting on here. Is this? The resident, is, is this the? Could you just explain what this is?
Yes, I think I'm going to actually, instead of me stumbling through it, I'm going to either ask David or Sean Mangano.
Well, this is the vote you picked.
You got it, David? No, so this is to keep the, the residential tax rate the same as all the other classes, so the commercial rate and the, and the residential rate and. The other classes will all be the same.
Okay, so this is different from the residential.
Yeah, this is not the, this is not the residential exemption vote.
Okay, all right. So I, I voted, I voted wrong last year. I didn't know what I was voting on. So I just want to do it right this time.
Thank you, Darcy. Evan?
My understanding is our, our agenda had listed a special public comment period for this item.
Thank you. I appreciate that reminder, and I will now move to a special public comment period. Are there any people who would like to make comment with regard to our tax rates at this time? Okay, I'm seeing no public comments, so we're going to return to the motions. The motion's been made and seconded, is there, are there further questions? And Evan and I completely appreciate that reminder. I think Alyssa was one hand behind you to do the same. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move to the vote. I'm going to start with Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greyston, aye. Mandy Jo Hanicky.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Abstained.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Bonmild.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
The vote is eleven in favor, none opposed, one abstention, one absent. The next motion is not, to not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Is there a second?
Hanicky seconds.
Okay, are there questions? Darcy?
Mr. Comment?
Yes.
I just. As, as I did last year, I, I would prefer to adopt the residential exemption. Because I think that it would advantage our low income and moderate income. Homeowners that are maybe potentially threatened with leaving town because they have their tax rates and. I would like to prevent that from happening and having their low and moderate income housing. Bought up by investors. So I am going to vote no on this again, and I would like. I, I don't expect to win on that vote. But I would like the town to look, you know, within the next year, to look into. What other towns do, who, that have adopted the residential exemption to. To try to prevent, to make sure that renters aren't. Somehow disadvantaged by having it pass, and how they've handled exemptions for. You know, people who have a hardship paying their taxes as a result of their taxes going up. So that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Dorothy?
At our last meeting, we discussed this. A number of people were interested in it, and I thought we were told we were going to get some kind of report. Analyzing this further. But can I, when I see that we're not, I'm just, you know. Owner-occupied housing, as opposed to non-owner-occupied housing, I think should be supported as a way of preventing. Speculative, speculative decisions which are disruptive to neighborhoods and also not safe for students.
I think the issue is not, are we going to get it? It's the timing of that report. And the idea was that there would be no change in this year, but there would be further research done during this year. Going into next year. Anybody else have a different impression? Sean?
Yeah, so my recollection from the last meeting is that the next step is really to engage the public more on it and get their thoughts on how they feel about it. And to talk more with the, the apartment complexes to find out how adopting something like this would impact rents. I think we provided a report that can do as much as we can do just looking at the numbers and crunching the numbers, but I think now we have to actually. Talk to people and find out how it will really play out. So I think that was the next step that we would hope to do maybe over the next year.
Thank you, Sean. Kathy?
I was just gonna say that I have the same memory that you do, Sean, on next step. But my suggestion would be to do it in the first half of the year rather than wait. So should we want to make a decision to do something different? You all laid out very clearly that there's a lot of complicated things that we would have to do. And the one other suggestion I have, you gave us one example where more than, more than two would probably be asked, be too much. But you showed if you did one particular kind of example and then you set it at the $500,000 break even point, you could do one a little bit less and then tell us how many are within, you know, near, near to no impact. So just, so when you engage the public, they get a sense that it, it either matters a lot or not, doesn't matter very much on two cuts. That would just be a suggestion. But I, Lynn, I didn't want to wait to get this report it's September, October next year and be up against having to make a decision. So moving it to the first half of, half-ish of the year to come back to it.
Great. Thank you. I agree with that. Alyssa?
Yes, thank you. And, and I need to express my great desire for that as well. We've talked about having this conversation before, obviously COVID, but we should have had this conversation over the past year. And we didn't. So we need to do, I agree with Kathy and you, that we need to make sure we do it early in the year. The other part of that, though, that's complicated beyond the fact that it's a simple fact that renters are disadvantaged. There, there's not a question there. They are. When it's done in other municipalities, they don't care because they don't have the high rental populations we have. So the question is not what are other communities doing to fix this? They're not fixing it. The question is what tools might be available to us to fix it, given that other people aren't using those tools because it doesn't match with their, with their municipality. But the other bigger question I have here is, so we're going to engage the public more on it and how they feel about it. We're going to talk with the apartment complexes about looking at the impact on rents. We're going to talk to people. We don't have a mayor, so who's empowered to do that? Are we expecting that to become an Engage Amherst project with the CPOs and Sean perhaps assigned to that? So I think that it's important that before we get too far into the budget cycle, because that has a whole nother level of complication, is that the town council here back in the next month or so, what the plan is for going through that process. Because you're going to send out Board of Assessors members to talk to the apartment complexes? I don't know who you're going to send to do that. And obviously, we haven't done it. And so I think it's really important that that plan be laid out and agreed to by the town council. And then so that we have a report, but we understand what's feeding into it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take that up with the town manager when we meet next. Are there any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, I'm going to start with Darcy Dumont.
No.
Griesmer is an aye, Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Abstain.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Baumil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
If the vote is ten in favor, one opposed, two abst- no, it can't be. Must be.
Ten, one, one with one absent.
Thank you. Ten, one, one. Ten, one, one with one absent. I put, use the A B twice in the wrong way. Thank you. The next motion with regard to this is to not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2022. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Steinberg, second.
Okay, Ross seconded it first. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. Griesmer votes aye, Andy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Abstain.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Baumil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont.
Yes.
Votes eleven in favor, none opposed, one abstention, one absent. Okay, we're going to move on to authors. David, thank you for being with us and your continued work with the town. We appreciate that. And Kim will be seeing you in the future. Sean, I think you're staying on for this next one. And it is to the vote, which we already voted to suspend Rules of Procedure 8.4. So the authorization is to authorize a three-year lease to own purchase agreement with Stryker to replace five, five life pack, fifteen cardiac monitor devices in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21C. This does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second?
Second, De Angelis.
Are there questions or comments? Dorothy?
I was just so shocked at the price of $48,000 for each of these. And I, I guess I would like to know why. Is it that they're the only ones that make one that does the things you need? So that you, they've got you in a corner? Or is it some really complex machine which is so different? I mean, there are some that are being advertised on TV and I'm sure they're not, they're probably quite insufficient. But like your, your own home monitor for a hundred dollars or something, $48,000 for something like this just sounds like highway robbery to me. So that's, I'd really love to hear the answer to that.
Chief Nelson? Or Jeff Olmstead?
Well, Sean, Sean had, had his hand, Sean had.
I'm sorry, Sean.
Okay, I should use the, I should use the raise hand feature, sorry. Just to clarify, it's not $48,000 per machine. $48,000 is the year one payment. The total cost is about $140,000 for the five machines, so it's, it's still expensive. It's between 30 and 40,000 per machine. It may strike, it may be odd to you, but it's actually a really good deal that we're getting, which is one of the reasons why we're moving forward with it quickly. We budgeted $200,000 for this in the capital plan next year. And we're going to get all five, if this moves forward, we'll have all five of them replaced for about $140,000. And Jeff or Tim can speak to the, the machines themselves, why they're so expensive.
Yeah, all, all will start. I mean, they, they are, they are specialized equipment. And when you say, and we use, add, add on the fact that they're, that it's EMS equipment, the price is going to go, 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 go up. They're higher, 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 highly specialized. There, we tend, we use, we use them quite, quite, quite a bit. We've, we've had them since before, before I, I came, came here. And the price says everything, everything else go, you know, will in, in, increase every, 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 every year. But it's, it's a critical, critical need for us and for us to do, to do, to do our jobs. I mean, without, without these, we, we are not para, 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 paramedic level paramedic level service, service. Jeff, Jeff, Assistant Chief Olmstead can, can give, give, give some greater detail.
So this, this, this is the same level of device that you would see in an emergency department on a crash cart. Is built to be in a pre-hospital environment like ours and we get to monitor heart rates, rhythms, do 12 VDKGs, the level of oxygen in your bloodstream, the amount of carbon max, carbon dioxide that you breathe off when you exhale, which helps us regulate folks that are having difficulty breathing. It'll have the ability to do temperature monitoring for a patient. We do all of our vitals, blood pressure, pulse, respiratory rate, all come with it. It has the ability to Bluetooth to our EPR systems, our patient reporting systems, and we can transmit the information to hospitals as well. So it is a very specialized equipment that, that really can't be matched. And the quality of the product has stood up over time. So we're going to maintain the same level of equipment because we actually have a total of seven of them in our system. And these just happen to be a group of five that we bought together 10-ish years ago.
And bottom, bottom line is, they're at, they're, they're, they're beyond the, the end, the end of their use, 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 use of life. Our folks have done a good, good job at maintaining, retaining them over the last 10, 10, 10, 10 years. What, what's happened is that specifically the mother, motherboards are, are, cannot, cannot be, be replaced anymore. They, they just don't make, 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 make it anymore. And that is what, what, what has failed on, on our, on our two monitoring monitors. And so it's just, it goes, it's, it's logical to believe that the rest, the rest, the rest of them suffer the same, same fate, just that we don't know when. But again, they're pretty much past, past, past the use, use, use of life. The other, our other ones that we had, well, the ones that these replaced five, five, five years ago were in, we were in the, in the same spot. They, they were a year, a year, a year, year or so beyond their predicted, predicted lifetime. And we just, and we, we wanted to replace, 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 and while, while, while we still, still had them, had them function properly.
Thank you very much for the research, Sean, and for this explanation, both Tim and Jeff. Pat, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to echo what's already been said by Chief Nelson and Jeff Olmstead. This is critical equipment. This is not a debate. This is something that's absolutely necessary for the safety of every resident in Amherst. So this really needs to be unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Then I'm going to start with Mandy Jo.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalini Baumil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat De Angelis?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. It is unanimous for those of us here, 12, 0, 0, 1. Thank you. We're going to move on to the zoning bylaws. The first one is with regard to the ADUs. And I want to make a comment before, as we move forward. But I want to just thank again Chris Breastrop and I think Ben and Rob Mora are here. And I know that Maureen had to come in by phone because they lost power in her neighborhood. So she's with us as well. The, this is the second time we have looked at these. This very first one is on ADUs. The question that came up two weeks ago was whether or not there was a way in which this could be passed on in a deed. And in fact, the town attorney has provided that language and it's in your packet. And it now becomes part of the motion. Mandy Jo, you don't want to do it that way. You want to start with the original amendment, original, and then go to amendment.
So the motion is written for what is in the draft motion sheet, which does not include that language. So we need to make two motions. And, and I'm happy to do both, but it will be clearer that way.
Okay, why don't you begin with the first one?
So the first motion is to move to rescind zoning bylaw Article 5. Actually, I might be able to do it all in one motion if you give me a little bit of time. So I will try that. Moved to rescind zoning bylaw Article 5, Section 5.011 supplemental dwelling units and replace it by adopting a new Article 5, Section 5.011 accessory dwelling units as shown on pages nine to 11 of the motion sheet with the following additional change to Section 5.0113C. To, that replaces the current, the listed 5.0113C with the following language. Either the principal one-family dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by the owners of the principal one-family dwelling as their principal residence, which requirement shall be made a condition of any special permit approval or approval by the building commissioner and restricted as such by a deed restriction filed with the Registry of Deeds.
Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Are there questions or discussion? Kathy, I, I'm sorry, Shalini, your hand is up first.
Okay. So what are the, one of the reasons why we were making this change was to make it easy for homeowners to build an accessory dwelling unit. And there is a clear guideline already in the bylaw that one of the dwelling units shall be owned, occupied by the owner of the principal. So my question was, is, and I don't, yeah. And so the question is, would requiring a deed restriction and all of that add to the come, and I don't, okay, that's how hard or how cumbersome and costly is it to do the deed registration process? Because if that sounds intimidating or costly, then it defeats the purpose. So that's number one. And then secondly, doesn't just having the bylaw state that it has to be occupied by the owner guarantee that it will, I mean, safeguard the kind of safeguard we want?
Chris, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to respond to the first part of it and maybe Rob could respond to the second part of it. We don't think that it would necessarily be costly or cumbersome for an owner to record a deed restriction because what we're proposing is that we could create a form that would be used over and over again by whoever wanted to do this. And that form would be developed with our department and with KP Law. And the point of that would be that the applicant would not need to hire a lawyer to create his or her own form. And then recording a document at the registry, I think, is about $110 these days. So it would cost that amount to record the document, but otherwise, we don't think it would be an onerous process. But as far as your second question, Shalini, I think Rob Mora could describe how he currently keeps track of ADUs and other things that change and how he follows them and enforces them into the future. And he understands that a lot better than I do.
Rob?
Yes, thank you. So there's, there's two reasons to really be discussing a provision like this. One is to find ways to make sure that we, the town, the public, maybe a neighbor is aware of this type of a restriction. The other one is to make a, make it aware to the next owner. So the first one, I think we got handled pretty well with our own systems. We have a, a very nice permitting program now that can track these types of conditions. We do make conditions like this, part of rental permits that are issued. We can also make notes on property cards and be more clear and specific about when one of these accessory apartments exist. But the deed restriction would go a step further, be another layer of awareness that would be made available to the, the buyer of the property. So that would come up during a title examination. An attorney would make sure that their client is aware of it. It would come through the appraisal process if there's a lender involved. So although we didn't originally think it was necessary because we are able to track these ourselves internally and know where they are. this is just another level to, to help with that other situation.
Thank you. Can I just comment back on that?
Yes.
I think, I just want to be really clear for the public that one of the goals was to, like I said, make it easy for homeowners, and generally, they're, it's very expensive to hire lawyers. And like the big, bigger developers have lawyers and they are able to, and this was trying to make that easy. So I'm really happy to hear that you're creating the form so that it doesn't require hiring of a lawyer if you just want to put up an ADU in your home. So thank you for thinking through all of that.
Thank you. Kathy?
I just want to, I want to build on Shalini's comments. I really appreciate this addition. It's, I think it's important that it be continuous. The motion that Mandy read is now quite complicated. So I wouldn't mind, you know, it, in that it had lots of words and sentences in it. So I wouldn't mind seeing it on the screen when we actually vote on it. And my last is to, to build on this. I would really like something simple that people who are considering this would see that would state what we just now said, that there's going to be a form. You know, so something that we put out so they don't just have to go and listen to the verbal conversation here that and I don't know how best to do that, you know, but that, when they first inquire, they get a piece of paper that says, we're going to make this easy for you. You know, here's, here's how it's going to work. So people don't think that, oh, no, this is another burden. And I don't know how well we communicate that, but I'd love it stated somewhere very clearly. And we don't usually do that in bylaws.
No, we don't do that in bylaws. That's part of the procedures of the town offices. And I can describe that as, yeah. Is there anything else that either Chris or Rob would like to say about that? Chris?
Normally, when someone is going through a process, the person, the applicant, at least one, if not more, staff people, and the staff people explain the process. So when a person met with either our permit administrator or one of the inspectors or Rob Mora or myself, we would describe to them, you know, that a deed restriction is required, and we would provide the form of the deed restriction for them so they could see it and realize that it's not an onerous type of requirement.
Okay. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I want to thank all of our staff for getting the wording from KP Law and doing a little bit of additional research on this. And this is why we have two readings on something like this, because I brought up this issue at the last, at the first reading. Because my experience having read enough cases and remembering property law when I was in law school was that you don't put the prospective buyer on notice of something, then they have a right to say that they didn't know about it, and that recording something serves the purpose. And the day after, I did some looking, and I found other communities that have prescribed language that they provide that was available quite readily on the town website through their, their planning departments. And I found other Massachusetts communities that had deed restriction requirements built into their accessory dwelling unit bylaws. So I appreciate the fact that we're moved in this direction.
And before I ask Athena to put the full motion up on the screen, I, I just want to second what Andy said. And thank you for doing the research and thinking through the process. This is in no way to discourage people from ADUs. What it is to discourage people from doing is building an ADU and then selling the property as if it's two rentals. And that was the whole purpose. Are there any other questions or comments? Athena, are you able to show us the full motion? And Mandy Jo, if you would just quickly look at it and see whether or not it reflects what you said.
It does reflect what I said, but the current, replace the current, I think it should be replace the language or the motion sheet lang, or I'm not sure what it should say, but it should refer to the motion sheet language of Section 5.011. On the motion sheet with the following language, yeah.
Okay. Chris?
I just wanted to note that all the other letters after C will need to be re-lettered. So I don't know if that's something that you normally would include.
You know, Chris, I was actually confused by that because it seemed to me that this one was completely replacing C, and that although in the draft, it went on to number differently. In fact, it shouldn't do that.
Okay. I think it was because when you added a new paragraph, it renumbered, relettered everything. And then by deleting it, it relettered it back to where it was.
I agree.
But one, one other thing, it's not 5.011C, it's 5.0113C.
Free C, thank you.
There's no parentheses around the three.
Is there just a point three?
It's three.
Zero, one, one, three, C.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I actually, at one point, had written this as a amendment. So I want to thank Mandy Jo for putting it all in one motion. Are there any other questions? Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Oh, I don't. I just didn't know it.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. And I'm going to begin this with Mandy Jo.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Schwartz's absent, Shalini Balmain?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is a yes. It is unanimous for those of us here, twelve zero zero one. We're going to move on to the next one, and I want to point out that we have split this into two different motions. And the reason we have is because of the nature of what they each try to achieve. And also, based on KP Law's opinion, they require different quantum votes. So the first one is in section, you move that in section 3.323 apartments to delete SP, special permit, using permitting, use permitting in the RVC zoning district and replace with an SPR site plan review using permitting.
Second.
Okay. Are there questions or discussion? Kathy?
Yes, and I will do my best to limit this to three minutes. My first is, as I stated when we talked about this two weeks ago, I don't think we should make this change. I think we should keep it special permit. And I think there are concerns in each of the RVCs, if you look carefully at the map. And I'm particularly concerned about the RVC in the North Amherst area. It appears, and I, I sent Athena a visual to show this. If you, if I get permission to show it on the screen, it'll help me. Athena, are you able to do that, or can I share my screen?
Waiting for Lynn to say okay.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Share my screen?
No. I'm going to have.
Okay. So when, when you look at the borders of the RVC are quite odd. If you think abstractly of what they might look like, the land encurants a farm, a church, a historic inn, and a huge array of existing apartments, some historic houses. There is a real traffic problem, and RVC in our area is that orange. And I tried to put some arrows. It's all chopped up, so it doesn't even include the apartment areas that are in there, and it winds itself around. It includes some streets that have pretty narrow borders. It's on a floodplain, and it begs for a special permit because there are so many things that you might want to worry about if you put a very large structure on the land. One of the arguments, we've talked about potentially more units than twenty-four. And a lot of the land right along Pine Street, Meadow Street, is owned by the same landowner, so they could combine lots. And it abuts a farmland, it abuts an area with high traffic. So I think the zoning might need to be fixed in terms of what we're calling RVC, the way it winds around. But it's not the kind of thing that one normally thinks about when you think about a residential of a visible center, the way it winds around. And things need to fit in with some kind of design consideration on whether there are sidewalks, traffic patterns. Then we've just received the legal opinion last week, last week on Thursday, that this only takes seven votes because of a new change. And the references we had to the AMG L didn't even have this language in it yet. And it says that in areas that have a clear near transit station, we don't have one up in North Amherst. It has underused facilities. We don't have underused facilities. The land is all occupied in homes at this point, and traffic is a concern. And it, it, the way the wording reads, it doesn't think of a place that has farmland, historic buildings, neighborhoods, hoods with narrow streets. And we're near a floodplain area, so I don't think, I questioned the legal ruling that we only need seven votes for this. So for both these reasons, I'd like to postpone the discussion to get clearer legal reading. And as I said last time around, this has been decoupled from this issue of how many units would be in each apartment building. If we allow more twenty-four, every concern I've just listed is there more. The special, special permit would allow conditions to be put on, so potentially could fit in. And I will stop there.
Thank you.
And you can take my screen, but it's a very odd, if you look at these little orange things that wind around, that they jut out. There's part of a street, but not all of a street. And I think it must be just some artifact of the way borders were drawn at some time.
Okay, thank you. Please take the screen down. Thank you. Dorothy?
Well, I second all that Kathy said. And I would like to say that SP, which is what it is, special permit, just says it's not by right. It says it could be here, but it has to be examined very carefully. You can't just do it and then figure out what goes on later. So I think that that's good. It doesn't say you can't put an apartment there, but it says you have to really examine it and take a look at it, which Kathy outlined why that is very important. And in terms of the legal reading, I read it over five times. Each time, my brain just went into spirals. And I, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think I'm stupid. I felt that the legal reading was absolutely incomprehensible. So I think we need not to do this.
Evan?
Yeah, so about a year ago, we adopted the master plan, and the master plan said that we should be preserving our outline areas and promoting development of commercial and multifamily housing in our village centers and our downtown. Right now, our zoning bylaw is out of step with the master plan we adopted. And that's something that I'm really struggling with here. So I really appreciate the memo that the planning department put together that explained special permit versus site plan review. So let me just read from it. Special site plan review, uses are deemed appropriate for a specific zoning district, but the town would like some input into the use, building design, and siting. Special permit, uses that the town is unsure of whether the particular use is appropriate for a specific zoning district. Not whether it's appropriate for a specific parcel or site, but whether it's appropriate for that district. If we change BG to SP and we keep RVC as SP, what we are saying in our bylaw is that we are not sure that there is any district in our town for which special permit, for which apartments are appropriate, and we need to apply the highest level of scrutiny. That is inconsistent with the master plan this council adopted just a year ago. What moving to special permit says is, we think that it is appropriate for apartments to be in village centers, but we want to have some say into it. And that, to me, is what we actually adopted with our master plan. Special permit says, we don't really think it should be here, but, okay, maybe we'll talk about it. So my question then is, if residential village centers, our, our moderate-density village centers, what our master plan says we should be putting multifamily housing in, if they're not immediately appropriate for apartments, where is appropriate for apartments? That's what I don't understand. This is a zoning, a town, and we have a zoning bylaw that favors single-family houses on large lots. And that is a town that is going to struggle to meet its equity goals. That's a town that's going to struggle to meet its climate goals. And so if we are continuing to say, we don't think there's anywhere in town that we are going to deem appropriate. We aren't sure if it's appropriate. How, how do we not become a town that's just a place of, of privilege, right? How do we not become a town that, that is just a place, place of suburban sprawl? What this does is it makes our zoning bylaw consistent with our master plan. That's what this change does. Keeping it a special permit says we aren't sure where apartments are appropriate in our town. And that is not a path that I want to see us go down as a community, because I think that is a path that conflicts with many of the values that we claim. This town loves to say things on paper, but we don't like taking actual action to make progress on the things that we say. And I think that we have to start doing that, even if it makes us uncomfortable at times. Because we're not going to make progress if we're not willing to be uncomfortable at times. This is a smart change. This follows up and makes real what we voted a year ago.
Darcy?
Yeah, I agree with Kathy and Dorothy on this, and I really object to easing the zoning for apartments in the village centers, but in particular because I, I don't know what we would be agreeing to. Because it's, as Kathy said, it's decoupled from the issue of how many units or the definition of an apartment. I don't understand how we could approve something for a particular district when we don't know exactly what we're approving. So I, I also would, would request that the motion be withdrawn until we have a full conversation about exactly what it is we are adopting around apartments and village centers.
Kathy, I'm going to go over to Steve.
Hi. So I'm going to throw a cat into the pigeons because apartments are actually never by right. So because the definition of apartments are within the, within the, I, I'm sorry, I'm not going to use the right terminology, but if you read where an apartment can go, it says that the site or lot upon which one of our apartments are proposed shall be located close to heavily trafficked traveled streets or streets close to a business or in an area already developed for multi-use. So that's basically saying that they're never by right, that they have to meet those conditions, and somebody has to do, those are not scientific definitions. Those are somebody making those decisions. And I suspect that that's the reason that we've always had apartments be special permit. Is because of this other qualification embedded within the definition of apartments that must be met. And so even if we were to say, I don't see how we could say that apartments are by right anywhere when we have those other conditions there that could cause an error message. So for those reasons, I agree with those who have spoken earlier that this should be probably withdrawn, or I, I, I'm going to have to vote no also if this, if this comes. But we haven't addressed those, I know that the CRC has been aware of of that those can, I don't know what the right word to use, those parts of the, the bylaw. But um that does not make this clean to me.
Thank you, Shalani.
So I, okay, so what I'm here, my way of understanding this issue is that we are looking at zoning and based on the master plan, we've allocated certain areas where we want to allow for more density so that we're able to have the open spaces, the thirty percent of our land is open spaces and conserved. And and then certain areas are dense and and this, these are the transitional areas between the dense village centers and residential and the downtowns and the and the residential areas. So these are the medium density areas, right? And so this is where we are saying that according to the zoning that we've adopted in our master plan, that this is where we should allow for more density. And if that's the case, then we have the S, we should switch to an SPR. And we're switching that around for downtown, interestingly, so just want to make sure that people know that. But staying focused here, if you want to meet our housing goals, I feel this needs to move to SPR. But what I also want to acknowledge are the concerns that Kathy has raised. And to that, I would say that, and I would love to hear Chris maybe or Rob speak to that more. But my understanding is that, you know, where this there exist SPR doesn't mean anyone can just build anything. There are guidelines like a farmland, you can't have, uh, you have to keep one fifty feet buffer. Or if it's a dis, you know, it's a historic inn or a farm, it you cannot have an apartment over there. But I would prefer if Chris addressed, so I I hear your specific concerns about apartments. And my understanding is that we already have the dimension spaces and all of that in place that would not allow for this random apartments going anywhere and everywhere. So if I could have Chris or someone speak to the specific questions or concerns that Kathy raised.
Chris. Chris.
Yeah, I um I do know some of the concerns that Kathy raised. Um, and the first one, the RVC um borders are odd. Um, and some of the things that Kathy listed as being included in the RVC are actually not in the RVC. They're in other districts, they're in BBC or RN or different things. So for instance, um, the farm, the church and the historic inn, none of those are in RVC. One of them is in, I think, RLD, um.
They bought it.
In BBC, historic inn, I think is in BBC. So anyway, um, RVC is really a specific um location. And if somebody wants to bring up that map again, I think that might be helpful to show exactly where RVC is. Um, yes, we all acknowledge that traffic is a concern. I think, um, you know, I I understand that Kathy was concerned about traffic in North Amherst. And this continues to be a concern of all of us. And we've been applying for Mass Works grants over the years to help us with that. But um Mass Works comes back and says, well, there's not impending development there. And so once there is impending development, then they're more likely to um allow us to have a Mass Works grant. Now, we do have impending development in the erupter site. But if we also had um impending development on other sites, we might be more likely to get a Mass Works grant to help us with the traffic problems there. But meanwhile, the DPW is also looking at those issues and trying to solve some of the issues in a less expensive manner by modifying some of the traffic signals. Um, I think that one of the concerns that Kathy raised, and I did uh receive these concerns earlier today was um stormwater issues related to development. And the current um requirements as far as stormwater goes is that you need to keep your stormwater on site. You can't allow more runoff than is currently allowed. So a project that comes along um has to figure out a way of storing excess stormwater on the property, whether that's underground or in a in a tank or um in a basin or something. They need to keep it on site. They can't let it run off onto adjacent properties anymore than is currently allowed. And um the other question had to do with impact on farmland. And back when um there was a proposal to develop property on the north side of Meadow Street, there were a lot of concerns raised about um what that would do to the farm uh just north of Meadow Street, the Schwartz Farm. And at that time, um, town meeting put in a requirement that um there'd be a hundred fifty foot buffer adjacent to farmland in the FC district, Farmland Conservancy District. Um, and there are ways of um that the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals can modify that. But it is um a section of our bylaw. You can look at it, section three point two eight five five of the bylaw requires that that buffer zone. So um, you know, I think that there are, um, what should I say, safeguards here? And um I'm I'm thinking that um, you know, there's, there's a lot of fear about this, but maybe the fear is not uh as warranted um as it seems to be.
I'm gonna stick with calling on counselors who have not spoken, Mandy Jo.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Steve talked about apartments with conditions that the bylaw as written um has need, you know, has apartments having to be cited within the districts, within specific parts of the districts. Whether it's a special permit or a site plan review, there's a board that's going to make that decision. Either the ZBA or if this change is made with site plan review, the planning board will have to make that decision. Um, Kathy was saying that um the RVC abuts business districts, yes, that's the reason apartments are appropriate for the RVC area. And the whole discussion here is whether it's appropriate to have apartments in an area that abuts business districts. And if we can't say it's appropriate to put apartments, and reminder, apartments begin at three units. Not seven, not ten, three. If we can't say triple deckers and quadplexes are appropriate for the areas that abut business districts, the business village centers and are meant to be transitional to further larger residential areas, where can we say apartments are appropriate? And as Evan said, we're not following not only the master plan if we don't say that, but we're not following the housing, comprehensive housing goals we just adopted. We're going back on both of them. If we're gonna say, no, it's not appropriate to put apartments in residential village centers, the places that abut business districts. At beyond that, I'm not sure what to say. We're not looking at one parcel or another, we're looking at a district, the village center residential district. And what that's defined as and what it is, what is appropriate for that district in terms of uses. And it's defined for medium density transitional between business districts and other residential areas. And apartments are defined as medium density residential things. It makes sense to make this site plan review and declare that apartments are appropriate for residential village center districts.
I'm going with my observation that we're gonna go to counselors that haven't spoken yet. I think I'm next. I'd like to ask some clarification. Is there anything about the way this presently exists without this new amendment that prevents apartments from being built in village centers? No. Yeah, so all, what this new amendment does is remove a layer of review.
It changes the type of review, it doesn't remove a layer of review.
It changes the type.
From ZBA and what they're looking at to, from a presumed, we don't know whether it's appropriate to a planning board review that says, yes, it's generally presumed to be appropriate for an apartment building to be in a residential village center. It's not a level of review, it's a, the questions that are asked and the assumptions that are brought to that review that it changes.
And so I, I'm I'm gonna violate one of our principles and that is not mix these two votes. But what we wanna, we wanna do something to the BL that adds or makes it more difficult or makes it more. Gee.
The BL is not a bar, a a part of this, the BG is.
The BG, I'm sorry.
The BG is the next motion.
Right, and we're, we wanna, we wanna make that more difficult or change a layer of review?
Change the presumption in the BG from appropriate apartments are appropriate in BG to apartments are need a heightened level of scrutiny in BG. Versus what this motion is attempting to do, which is change the assumption from apartments need a heightened level of scrutiny and may not be appropriate in the residential village centers to apartments are appropriate in village centers and we need to look at other things.
Thank you. Um, Andy.
So I was uh really troubled by looking at the map for the North Amherst RVC sections. I think that Kathy described it quite well so that I don't need to repeat what she had to say. And I'm really struggling as to what to do here because it isn't about whether we were changing. Um, you know, there's a difference between uh the site plan review and uh special permit. It's a question of whether um apartments were are really appropriate in the North Amherst section, which is now labeled as RVC. So I uh, why I'm struggling is is because I think that uh what um Evan and Mandy have said is correct about the reasons to make a change for um RVC districts in general. But have to question whether either RVC is um inappropriate for some of the area that is in North Amherst. Or whether there should be something special done for the North Amherst section to recognize that it's not like some of the other RVC areas that exist in other regions and whether we should be looking at overlay districts or something that could redefine it. And uh I just don't know how to go about at this point in time dealing with all of that. But I um have to acknowledge that it's uh, having lived near North Amherst for a long time, I understand the point that North Amherst residents were making.
Maureen, you've had your hand up for a while, uh, would you like to say something?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Hi, ever, hi, everyone, I'm, I am attending Candlelit as I've lost power for about the last hour and a half. Um, I just wanted to answer a couple, clarify a couple of things um from uh members of the town council. Um, so the planning board does have the authority to put conditions on um any site plan review and uh special permit as well as uh as as does the zoning board of appeals. There was a counselor that had indicated or questioned whether the planning board can add conditions and and um and that is true, they can add conditions. And you know, before they uh uh the planning board or the zoning board of appeals uh deliberate on a decision, they have to make specific findings. Uh, for the planning board, it's uh under eleven point two four for the zoning board of appeals, it's under ten point three eight. And I heard some concerns about traffic and storm water. Um, and I, in in this particular area of of uh of uh North uh North Amherst. And so, you know, the planning board needs to make specific findings, it 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 covers a whole um array of different topics. Uh, two specific ones are traffic and stormwater. Um, Chris had touched upon that earlier of, you know, the applicant needs to prove that they're dealing with uh the stormwater on on the property of providing rain gardens or or what have you um to capture and infiltrate that water back into the property and not onto adjacent um properties um such as farm or or another, you know, another use. And you know, the board and the applicant need to review what is the existing traffic? What is the proposed traffic? How is that gonna impact the street, the sidewalks, the adjacent uh streets? And again, the planning board needs to make those findings. And if the applicant can't meet, you know, satisfactorily meet those findings, um, you know, the the applicant will need to make revisions, um perhaps uh reduce the 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 scale of the project. Um, and it's part, it's part of that case on case, uh case by case um application before the board. You know, and in my experience here in Amherst, you know, there's been a a number of times that the zoning board of appeals has, through the discussion about traffic, for instance, has made the applicant as a condition of the permit to provide roadway improvements. Um, just right now, uh, you know, one new drive self, which is uh the ZBA approved in twenty twenty for a mixed use building. The developer, uh, based on these sorts of question, uh discussions about making these findings, that they weren't have, they were having difficulty making these findings. Through that permit process, that public hearing process that both the planning board and the ZBA do routinely, is that that developer is uh constructing a brand new uh roundabout and uh sidewalks. Um, and um there is um the Southeast Commons, um, another mixed use building is providing um public right of way improvements as well as a condition of 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 the permit. And that was through the planning board. Um, so there are um definitely discussions about traffic, stormwater, uh among a variety of other topics. Um, and so, uh, you know, if there are concerns about about those items, it would be captured in the public hearing process for if if this proposal was approved through the planning board or through the ZBA. Um, and just, you know, the the purpose of the RVC uh the um is to provide um, you know, a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood of medium density. And so the proposal as is, is to maintain the medium density of apartments, which is, one could argue, it's low to medium density from three units to twenty four units uh per building on a property. Now, just to put it in perspective, well, how many, how much land do you need to put in uh uh to allow a twenty four unit apartment building? You need, and I'm I'm reading Candlelight here, you need uh about uh two point four acres. You need a hundred and and seven thousand square feet to provide a three four, twenty four unit building while also maintaining um the the lock coverage, maximum lock coverage in the RVC is at forty percent. Therefore, the amount of open space that needs provided for landscaping, grass, what have you, is sixty percent. And um that is uh about one point four seven acres uh of land. Um, and so again, this, we're talking about low to medium um residential density, which is uh in the spirit of of the RV uh zoning district purpose a- as as uh stated in the zoning bylaw. And I just wanted to point out those things.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start back since there are people who've had their hands raised, um Kathy.
Um, thank you, Lynn. Um, if I won't pull my map up again, but I just want to um leave with people that image. We have apartment buildings, we don't have urban sprawl or suburban sprawl. If you look at North Amherst Presidential, Cresview, Brandywine, Pu- Pu- Puft, it's a sea of apartment buildings. We're not saying, your question, Lynn, on do we allow apartment buildings? Yes, Amherst allows apartment buildings. There's one more level of review, and I think it is a level of review that might say on this particular street, this particular block, not a good idea. Maybe a duplex, maybe an owner occupied duplex, maybe a triplex. But that's, that's what I think the special permit offers as a protection. And when you look at that North Amherst map, um, what you see is, yeah, it's, as Chris said, it carved out the Black Walnut Inn. So the RVC goes around it and leaves that little corner where there's a nice historic building. Then it goes around another one, that's why it's that odd shape. Um, and then there's a whole group of historic houses that it doesn't go around. Um, and then there's a whole group of historic houses that it doesn't go around. And Maureen is right, you need a lot of land, but the land along Meadow is largely owned. Each of those houses is largely owned by one person and they could combine lots unless we're going to say you just can't do that. So all I'm saying is there is a reason to keep SB particularly for this and I think conceptually. RBC, if you think in the abstract, sure, everything someone has said, but we haven't drawn RBCs with that in mind. I don't know where they came historically, but some of them are pretty odd and. The master plan says we should be doing village planning. With design, with consideration of massing, we're not doing that part of the master plan, we really should be thinking of what do we want? And you know, an earlier spokesperson talked about small business, we'd like to keep the small businesses. I would hate to see the House of Teriyaki become a large apartment building without a restaurant in it. And maybe we'll carve out that piece and say that's in the business district, not an RBC, but we just need to think about what we're doing here. We need to think about that whole group. And again, I'm focused on North Amherst because I really know it. And Maureen, I would love it if a developer would pay the $2 million that we have estimated to fix the roads that come together. I don't think that's going to happen, it's a bigger problem and we probably need a Massworks grant. So I'm hoping the erupter will be the stimulus for that. Because now traffic is going through Harris and, and two other streets to avoid the light. Because the backup is worse as the apartment buildings we have now all come with cars. And we thought it would get worse when North Square opened, but it is definitely worse despite our light that's helping it not go over Route 116. So we have a problem.
Evan?
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, a clarification, uh, House of Teriyaki is in the BVC, not the RVC, so nothing we do here will have any impact on House of Teriyaki. Um, but I think Kathy actually brought up something interesting, which is she named, uh, Puffton, she named Brandywine. Uh, those actually are in the RN, which doesn't allow apartments. So those are non-conforming, those actually couldn't be built today. Same thing with the East Hadley Road Apartments, those are, I believe also in the RN, those can be built today. Colonial Village, those couldn't be built today. So a lot of the apartments we see today actually couldn't be built today under current zoning. So we're talking about a very small portion of land. That's directly surrounding our business districts and we're asking the council, is it appropriate to put apartments in these parcels? That are surrounding our business districts and if we keep it a special permit, we're saying, we're not sure and I am. Honestly so confused that we would have that position and yet still say we support the master plan. It is just inconsistent with the master plan. And you know, I was looking back at the housing market study from 2015 because we've been talking about this stuff for a while. And it made very clear, it said, the town's existing requirements limit apartments to areas that appear to be substantially built, such as the business and village districts. These locations make good planning sense for higher density housing, but they offer few opportunities to create a significant number of housing units unless regulations are adjusted. And so we need to take a hard look at what our regulations are, we've known about this for a while, this isn't some rushed thing, we've been talking about this for a while. And so I just don't understand why we are so unwilling to make the actual changes in our zoning so that our zoning matches. Our master plan, that's where I'm getting confused and I, I really want to thank Maureen for what she was saying because. I think Kathy made some comments where she said, big apartment buildings, keep in mind, when we're talking about apartment buildings in the RBC. Dimensional regulations, no more than three floors, no higher than 35 feet. Uh, maximum building coverage is what, uh, 25% maximum lot coverage is 40%, which means 60% of the parcel. Has to remain as green space, we're not talking about what we're seeing downtown going in North Amherst, we're talking about max three floors. 35 feet and 60% of the land still being green space, but we're just saying. This is where it makes sense for have, us to have apartments and I want to again ask if we are saying. That we don't know, we're unsure, which is the literal definition provided to us by planning department. Whether apartments are appropriate for a village center, I want to hear from folks, where are apartments appropriate? Where are you sure that you're appropriate? Because what we're looking at right now is a situation where we're saying. Nowhere and I don't think that's where we want to go as a town. Um, you know, this came from planning department, they vetted it, they're recommending it, they have the expertise on this. Our planning board voted almost unanimously to recommend that we do this and so I'm really struggling to figure out. Where some of this opposition is coming from.
Um. Hold on, um. Dorothy?
The more heat, the less light. Um, we're talking about apartment buildings, but we don't have a definition of apartment buildings. We're supposed to remove the cap at some other discussion. I, I think first you get your definitions straight and then you talk about them. When you argue for apartment buildings, you talk about triplexes and small units, of course, sounds really great. That's not what you're trying to do, you're trying to say all apartments can come in with very little oversight. I didn't say apartments couldn't go in village centers. Um, it's just that I wanted them to be looked at carefully and examined one by one, not a generally open the gate and let anything happen. So yes, there is a statement about a buffer for agricultural, uh, land. But Chris did say it and she said it rather quickly, but she did say that can be modified. That's a fear that people have that that buffer, which has been put in there, could be modified. So there's so many things that could happen that could make something bad. Uh, when there could be some very nice apartments that would be very appropriate for the area that everyone would be happy with. But I think that what happens is sometimes you come down to trust. Some people have more trust than others, okay? I just don't forget Spring Street. I think there have been things that have happened that are very unfortunate in this town and I'm hoping for intelligent, thoughtful zoning, which will increase housing. And I would like it to be a variety of housing types, including attainable and affordable housing, homeownership and rental. Not just expensive rental apartments to be rented by the bed. So I, I think we share a lot of common ground, but we also look at it from slightly different points of view. And I think that not rushing and opening the door. But not closing it, none of us have said no apartments are appropriate there, we've said. Special permit, so that you can consider them one by one and a good project will get approved, I have every confidence.
Shalani?
Yeah, I again want to clarify that, um, Dorothy, when you say that there's little oversight with SPR. I don't think that's true as Mandy Jo clarified, there's a planning board, unless you're saying the planning board doesn't count, I think they do a very. Uh, thorough process and so there is oversight, but the one thing that I did want to clarify is that you said it could be easily modified. What Chris said that the dimensions or the 150 foot could be modified, but then it would require a special permit, which is what it is right now. So it's, it's not like, yeah, a modification in the dimensional requirements and if any of those things are being changed. They, the applicant would have to go through a special permit, am I right about that? Yeah, okay, Evan is nodding, yes. So, so it would still require special permit, which means then it's no longer in SPR, it would require to go back. But if they are following the 60% and Kathy, as you said, if they get their multiple. Uh, the, the same owner owns multiple land, okay, if they combine it and they still have to keep 60%. That's a hell of a lot of land that's being left for open space. So I'm still not hearing what, because all the concerns that have been raised so far, I have not heard. Um, I've heard answers, responses to that. But we seem to be going around in circles and unless there's a new, and the last thing I want to say also Lynn, uh, when you. To clarify why the CRC made it. Special permit, they moved the downtown area of instead of SPR, we made it SP for apartments because. We want to encourage more mixed use, uh, and retail downtown, so right now. Uh, it's by right in downtown areas to have apartments and we're making that. Opposite that there we want to have more retail, so there they would require SP. And in the RBCs, we are saying, well, it's SP over there, let's make that SPR. So that was the reasoning for that.
Chris?
Um, yes, I just wanted to clarify two things, um, one is that, um, the 150 foot buffer. Can be modified by the permit granting board or authority, um, and it doesn't require a special permit, I'm sorry. To, uh, contradict, but, um, it just, uh, needs the board that is reviewing the project to agree that the 150 feet can be modified. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, two things that I find are different between. A special permit from the zoning board of appeals and a site plan review from the planning board are. With a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, the board of appeals can, um, deny the permit. Now, our zoning board of appeals almost never denies a permit, but on occasion they do or they. Um, appear to be about to deny it and then an applicant would often withdraw the application. So it is, um, more likely, um, for the ZBA to deny a permit than it would be for the planning board. Uh, the planning board can only deny a permit if a proper amount of information is not submitted or if the application is clearly. Not in, uh, concert with the zoning bylaw. However, um, our ZBA, I think, you know, grants 95% or more of the special permits that are requested. So it's not really, uh, that much of a barrier. Um, and I also wanted to mention the fact that a special permit does have an appeal process and a site plan review, um, you know, people can appeal it. But, um, it rarely happens. And, um, but a special permit does have a 20 day appeal process, process after the, uh. Decision is filed with the town clerk, so those are the two things discretionary permit is a special permit and it does have an appeal process, thank you.
Are there other comments at this time? I just, um. I would say this is, this is not as straightforward as I thought it was. Uh, and while I totally support the comprehensive housing policy. You know, I look at where we've identified the three RBCs, I believe there's only three. Um, and one of them includes the area around the, in, in the way the map's drawn. Includes the area, um, in the village center at East Village Center includes the common. And so one of my questions is, does that mean the common could be built? Up in that area as well? I mean, that's our land. Um, so Chris, I, you know, I mean, I've looked at the North Amherst map and now I've just gone back and looked at the. East Amherst map and so I'm a little confused about what could really happen there.
Did you want me to answer that?
Please.
So the common can only be built on if the town council decides to sell the property to a developer. Um, and that is highly unlikely in my opinion. Um, it's town owned land and it's also part of the right of way if I'm not mistaken, so. It's really quite unlikely that, um, that land would be developed.
But the area around it, like behind it where there's presently. You know, the, the, um, East Street School, which we've already voted to have become low income housing. Or given it to the trust to do so and then there's other. You know, apartments are multifamilies there now, that's essentially the area that we're talking about, right?
Hmm, that's right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mandy Jo?
Yes, and let me remind you that area already has apartments and we're trying to make it easier for. Areas where it's appropriate to have apartments for people to get their permit to give apartments, so everything that Chris said. Shows that a ZBA permit is more costly, is not as, um. Potentially, um. Given, meaning it might not be granted, but it takes more effort, um, than a site plan review and then adds costs. And if we're trying to reduce the costs of rentals. We don't want to be adding costs to permitting, there are people, as Chris said, that just withdraw. They spend thousands of dollars trying to get through the ZBA process and yes, the ZBA hasn't denied the permit because they withdrew. The applicant withdrew after spending thousands of dollars. Because they saw the writing on the wall. This is not a town that is easy to build in despite what people think and the more. Barriers we put towards building things like triplexes and quadplexes and yes, even apartment buildings of six, eight or 10 units. The more expensive those rentals are. And so a site plan review. Permitting pathway in the areas next to business village centers makes sense.
Thank you, George?
Just like to remind my colleagues that this proposal came from the planning department. Um, and has been thoroughly vetted and reviewed by them. And so that's just one point. Um, the second, I guess, is that I sometimes have a feeling that at least some of my colleagues. Um, in addition to wanting to be town councillors, would also like to serve on the ZBA and on the planning board. Um, I, I sometimes wonder if people really do trust the process. Um, we have a very thorough and careful process and both of these avenues that are being looked at today. Um, are going to have thorough review, so I guess just reminding you that this is coming from the planning department after their thorough study. And that we have, uh, very vigorous and strong processes in place and I think we need to trust them.
Are there any other comments at this time? So the motion's been made and seconded, the legal opinion is that it requires seven votes. Kathy Shane?
I question the seven vote legal opinion. Um, I did read the legal memo, Dorothy said she found it impenetrable, I didn't, I felt it was splitting hairs. And looking for reasons to come up with seven. And then looking for other reasons to come up with nine. I, I did read the MGL citation that was given with the motion. And, uh, the language that was being referred to in the legal opinion is not yet in. Section five, I, I imagine it's because the law was only passed recently. But I think, um, some of the areas we're talking about don't fit. What the legal opinion talked about, um, specifically, I read them quickly before. So I'm, I'm arguing that it should be nine, basically. Um, it's not near a ma- major transit station and they're very specific about transit stations, it's not just that there's a bus route somewhere. It doesn't have underused facilities, we have a built up community and traffic is a concern. So, so there's, there's, um, there in the law. The attempt, again, I'm saying in the abstract was saying. We're imagining an area that's right near other businesses and we want to allow something to be built there. Because there's land that can be built on and we have the capacity for the building to be built up. And that's when it gets lowered to seven. The, one of, some of the areas we're talking about don't fit that well. And so there's a clever way that the lawyer looked at it to say, oh, but in the BG, it's nine. And then he kind of said, well, maybe yes, maybe no, and it's an interpretation. Then the, I did ask a question if we, if whether we can get a second opinion and whether the AG would refer this and I was told. AG reviews if we're a town, but if we're a city, they don't review. Um, so we are, the, the city known as the town of Amherst, so we don't get reviewed, so I don't know how to get a second opinion. But we only got the opinion on Thursday and I didn't pay enough attention Lynn to see that one motion said seven votes and the other said nine. I'm just really troubled about that. Um, and so if we could wait, I guess you're going to have a meeting, a special meeting tomorrow. But I question whether it shouldn't be nine votes. I'm calling, I may still lose, but I question that it shouldn't be nine.
I'm calling on Paul.
Um, thank you Lynn, so. It is a relatively new law, there isn't case law built up to support any opinion, any of this interpretation. Um, so, so our attorney did do a fair amount of research on this, did as much and did a lot of rereading of the state law. Under which he rendered his opinion, he talked to other attorneys, uh, at, in state agencies. And other attorney, attorneys that he works with on a regular basis and came to the conclusion that he recommended. It wasn't done lightly, it was done with careful legal analysis. Um, you can accept the town attorney's opinion or you don't, that's up to you, it's up to the council to decide how many, how, how it wants, but he, what, what this. You know, his legal opinion is that the legal threshold on these two votes are different at seven and nine votes. Um, and so that's, that's your, that's when you ask an attorney for an. And so that's, that's your, that's when you ask an attorney for an opinion, that's what you receive. And that's what, how he did it. And, and I can tell you that he spent a lot of time on this and did give a very careful examination.
And Paul, can I just, in his memo, he said, the legal, the language in the law is somewhat vague. And as you said, there aren't precedents, so you, you, one has to interpret. And so we're, we're, we're a guinea pig here on interpretation before we get further clarification. So I just would argue we should stay with nine.
And just, if I may, Lynn, so yeah, as, as, if we were a town, you know, and town meeting passed a bylaw, that would go to the attorney general and they would have the ultimate review of it. But since we are a city, the city is presumed to have, making the right decision without review by the attorney general. So. So yeah, so it's an opinion.
Darcy.
I'm assuming that we could still get an opinion from the AG if we chose to request it. It's just not required, right? I mean, we, we could go there.
Paul.
Well, we could request it. I don't think they would render an opinion to us.
Darcy, you heard that, right?
Yes. Yeah, it just seems like, where do we go in a situation where we're not sure what the vote count needs to be?
Mandy Jo.
We follow our attorney's opinion. That's where we go. Our attorney, the town attorney, the city known as the Town of Amherst attorney said it's seven. And it said it's nine for the other ones. And it said it was nine for the ADUs. We follow our town attorney's opinion because that's who we take advice from.
George.
If the attorney said it was nine, it would be nine. The attorney's rendered his opinion and he says it's seven, and so it's.
All right. Are there any other comments at this time? Then we're going to move to a vote. We start with Dorothy Pam.
No.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
No.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Shalony Balmil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. I'm sorry, I didn't call her name. So it's nine in favor. Three noes and one, no abstentions and one absent. We're moving on to the second, the next one. The motion is as follows. In section three point three, two, three, apartments to delete the SPR site plan review use permitting in the BG zoning district and replace within SP, special permit use permitting. Nine votes required to pass per Mass General Laws, chapter forty A, paragraph five. Is there a second?
Second, Ryan.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Then we're going to move to the vote. We're going to start with Evan Ross. I'm sorry, Dorothy.
Okay. So I just want to say that I believe one reason this is before us is that there's a plan to lift the cap on apartment buildings. And the reason people have guessed, that many people have chosen to do mixed use downtown, although they really don't want to do retail on the ground floor, is that they did not like the cap on apartment buildings, so they chose mixed use, which allows bigger buildings. So in anticipation of the raising, elimination of the cap on apartment buildings, which is expected to happen quite soon, the decision has been made that we have to change it and make it harder for people to do a apartment downtown because we want the mixed use. Now, I want the mixed use too. And so I'm not really saying that that is bad, this is a proper thing, but I just want you to point out that I believe that the reason it's brought before us is because there's part of the plan to eliminate the cap on apartment buildings. So just, you know, keep a broader picture.
And if there are any other comments or questions, Shalony.
I disagree with that assessment. That's your assumption and, you know, if that's what you're thinking, then you can say, but it's not fair to say that that's what I'm thinking because I put in a lot of thought into that question. And we had a big discussion about why we chose to switch it around and we agreed that we want to encourage more retail down and that was the reasoning. And the twenty-four units, we did not, at least in my mind, we have shelved that for now because that requires more thought and deliberation. And how that's going to go, I don't know at this point. So, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? Kathy Shane.
I'm in favor of this, but I also, I just want to make sure everybody remembers that we did have public hearings on this. And those were exactly the issues that were brought up, that with the combination of lifting the cap, we would lose mixed use. And that's what resulted in this split. So go back and look at what we want to do. But it is to really encourage mixed use and make it harder to have apartments only in the downtown. And I think that is a, a good goal and an important goal. So I am in favor of this. But I don't think, it wasn't just an imagination, Shalony. It was, it was brought up throughout the public hearing process. And I was very happy to hear CRC take it up again and try to think it through. I think it's important.
Are there any further questions or comments? Okay, then we're going to move to the vote. Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalony Balmil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yeah.
It's unanimous, twelve, zero, zero, and one absent. We've done the next item, so we're moving on to long-term public way requests back in parking. Thank you to all the planning board people and planning members who've been here tonight and for returning again and again. Thank you. We've already voted eight point four on this. Guilford Mouring has joined us for the second time. We sent him home last time. So we're going to have a brief presentation, but let me just re-meet, re- Hold on. Yeah, there's two motions in regard to this. We've already done eight point four. Guilford, do you want to just quickly give us a presentation and we will show, show the map?
You're muted, Guilford.
You could start the, show the map. So what, what we're doing is, um, two things here. We're getting ready for the winter. Last winter, we took all the barricades down and we restriped the road and went to the normal way it was laid out for the winter. And then we went back in the spring and restriped again for the sprint, the summer and springtime. So this is, that's going to be a bit of a bother. It's very, it's, it's costly and it's time consuming. So we, we decided that since we have the backend parking down past the pizza joint right now, Antonio's, we would leave that through the winter and experiments more with it. And then it would be in place for the summer and spring and we wouldn't have to repaint the lines. So the Donut Shop, which is the address in question, the two, twenty-three through twenty-five North Pleasant and eleven through nineteen, those four businesses, including the Donut Shop, are not using the dining and they want to have parking restored in front of their building. So the second reason to do this is to put parking in for those businesses. But then again, leave it until the spring and then in the spring, we would come back and talk about what, how we're setting up the downtown and if we're going to have on-street dining, if we have no on-street dining, or if we're going to leave the parking the way it is, or put the road back the way it was. So those are the two reasons for doing this. Give parking for the two, or for the four businesses at, at that corner and then to not have to go through the process of grinding the road, repainting it, and then grinding the road and repainting it again in the spring.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to start with the first motion. The first one is to suspend town council rules, rules of town council policy regarding the control and regulation of the public ways. Section two C, because a public hearing is not essential for a long-term temporary change to a minimal amount of parking through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you just read the beginning of that motion again?
Yeah, to suspend town council policy regarding. Okay.
I understand.
All right. Seeing no questions, I'm going to move to a vote. George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Shalony Balmil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. It's unanimous, twelve, zero, zero, and one absent. Moving to the next one, to approve the long-term change until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two of two parallel parking spaces in front of eleven to nineteen and twenty-three to twenty-five North Pleasant Street to three backend angle parking spaces with meters for all three spaces enforced from eight AM to eight PM with rates set at one dollar per hour with a two-hour limit. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the vote. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Shalony Balmil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
And George Ryan.
Aye.
That is unanimous, twelve, zero, zero, and one absent. Guilford, thanks.
Thank you.
Are you going to stay for the regulations on Lincoln Ave?
I think so.
Okay. Let's move on then. Evan, why don't you begin? We have maps we can put up and you can tell us what you want to do.
Yeah, so, um, you hopefully had an opportunity to read the report, which I got in earlier than my last TSO report. And so that went through much discussion that TSO had. But basically, just to, for folks who are watching, some histories that we considered this at our March ninth, twenty twenty, meeting regulation, parking regulation changes on Lincoln Ave. And we held a public hearing on that. And at that time, it was referred to TSO. TSO about a year ago, I think September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, tabled that discussion because we wanted to have a more comprehensive way of approaching residential parking regulation changes in town. That's one of the things TSO worked on this fall and developed criteria to review parking regulation changes. And we thought since Lincoln Ave had already been referred to us, since that had been sitting in our committee for about a year and a half, it was a good first test case of applying the criteria that we developed. And so we went through that. It's all outlined in the report, what we considered with each piece of criteria. And at the end, TSO voted three to one with one abstention to recommend the town council adopt parking regulation changes on Lincoln Ave. The changes are almost the exact same changes that were proposed by DPW at that March ninth meeting, which is to prohibit parking on Lincoln, on the east side of Lincoln Ave as a toe zone from eight AM to five PM. The only change from what was proposed from DPW is that TSO added that those regulate, that those restrictions would only occur from September first to May thirty-first, which would make it consistent with the downtown parking permit regulations. And so I'm going to assume folks read the report, so I'm happy to answer questions about the TSO deliberation. I'll defer to Guilford to answer questions about the proposal itself, since it is DPW's proposal. Yeah.
Questions? Yeah, we have this listed as a first discussion because it was so long ago that we had the other. But if somebody wants to change that, they can. Dorothy.
Well, I would like to mention that Evan and his committee have created a very logical set of steps, criteria. It took a little bit of time to go through them, but once you have gone through them, you have basically answered most of the questions that need to be answered. And we did that and the committee, not, not by unanimous vote, but by a passing vote, moved to support it. So I just wanted to say that I feel strengthened in my support for this proposal because of the clear steps that were taken in that process. And also because it is, although it has been something that many residents have sought, this proposal comes from the town department by people who don't live on the block, don't own property on the block, but was based on facts, the, the width of the road and how much width is required for two lanes of traffic and a lane of parking. And concluded there is, if the road is not wide enough. So we aren't discussing making it a one-way road. We're discussing keeping it a two-way road. But the answer then for safety, which has been the major concern of people who've brought up this complaint, is that the parking be eliminated eight to five on weekdays. This does not keep people from parking in the evening when there are events nearby or parking on it all day over the weekend. So it really just keeps it from being a, kind of like a parking lot during the day, during the, during the work week. And I think it would be a very good plan and that it would not, it would be supportive of people being able to, to park for shopping and events, but would keep, maintain the safety of the road. Now, some might say that since UMass is going to shut off the end of Lincoln during the construction period for the next year or two, on the new dorms, that this, there wouldn't be a problem, but I think that is just going to create it to be more like some kind of cheap parking lot. So I think it's very important that we follow through, keep up the momentum and to follow the logic of the process of TSO and the logic that the DPW put together in presenting this plan. So I, I hope people will support it.
Mandy Jo.
Yes, just a couple of things. First, I really appreciate having metrics and that policy that TSO adopted when looking at parking things because it, as Dorothy said, it really helps look at things in a logical, in a, in a manner that can be consistent throughout town and helps answer questions without relying on just, you know, your, your feeling and all. You, you have something to, to make a decision on. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the decision to limit the no parking time to the I also appreciate the decision to limit the no parking time to the times where it appears to be a high-traffic time, September to May, eight to five. Not in the summer, not in other low-use times. I do wonder and would like any discussion on why that same restriction from September to May was not suggested or recommended for the east side of Lincoln Avenue from Fearing to North Hadley. And I know that's, right now, no parking year-round. But I'm curious why it wasn't considered to make that eight to five, September to May in that small section too. And then I had one other. And then just something that doesn't relate directly to this, but I was surprised to hear or see and read that UMass can close the end of Lincoln Avenue without us as public way. So it might be good to somehow get an understanding of what roads are not, quote, "public ways" on UMass's campus. Because I have a feeling some of us might be surprised, including me, as to what is considered a public town way and what UMass could eliminate availability and use for without any say of the town. And so that doesn't really relate to this thing, but it might be helpful to see that on a map somewhere, somewhere delineated. Thanks.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to address Mandy Jo's last issue?
I think, I think Guilford can probably walk you through pretty quickly what roads are public and which are, are private. Probably more efficiently than I can.
So the, the easiest way to look at what roads are public in UMass is to start at University Drive North. That's owned by the university. Fearing Street Extension is owned by the university. Mass Ave is owned by the university. Mullins Way is owned by the university. Governor's Drive and Eastman Lane. And then there's a bunch of little small roads. I can't think of all the names of them. They're owned by the university. The main road to the center of town, east, North Pleasant, is owned by the town of Amherst. Lincoln is owned by the town of Amherst up to North Hadley Road. Once you cross North Hadley Road, that is owned by the University of Massachusetts. And then North Hadley is owned by the town and I always say this wrong.
Sunset.
Sunset. Is owned by the town. So, and actually, there's a really funny road. It's the road. There is one road where we own half the road and the university owns the other half of the road, and that's Butter Nut Terrace.
But with regard to Lincoln Ave, I think what you've just clarified is that they can shut off the one end of it because they own it.
Correct.
Thank you. That was very useful. Mandy Jo, thanks for asking that question. Evan?
Yeah, I, I wanted to respond to Mandy Jo's first question about that last one. So actually, in the first version of the motion that was put forward at TSO, it included parking prohibited from Fearing Street to North Hadley Road from September to May. And then we had a discussion. So we did discuss that. The feeling was that, for the most part, the only actual change we're making is Lincoln Ave from Amity to McClellan because the eight-to-five prohibition already exists on Lincoln from McClellan to Fearing, but we did add that September to May. But we, we saw, there was a feeling that because parking is already prohibited on that section of street, not just from eight to five Monday to Friday, but at all times, it made sense to just keep that consistent with what it's always been. So it was discussed at the committee, but there was a feeling of, for the sake of consistency, just leave that, that small section of road as it's been. But, but I did want to bring up that it was considered. And I would say that there were members of TSO even that were sort of surprised that the end of Lincoln could be just closed off. And so, yeah, not alone in that.
George?
I'm just going to make a request. I was impressed by Guilford's recital of all those streets, but I just can't write that fast. I was going to suggest if he would, at some point, sooner rather than later, just write up a list and, and TSO would really, that would help us as a committee. But I think also as keepers of the public way, I think the councilors too, I know I would like, I'd put it in some file somewhere and hopefully wouldn't lose it. If we just have a list of the streets that in fact are not under our egits, that would really be a kindness if you could do that.
And, and please add a map with it. Thank you. Anything else, George? Shalini?
Yeah, so I totally respect the residents who spoke at the public forums and I can understand how it must be impacting them. And my question was, how would this closure, I think it was briefly mentioned in the report, but how would it impact the other streets? And then are we just pushing the problem to the other neighborhoods?
I think you don't mean the closure. I think you mean the parking limits.
Yeah, the parking limits, yeah.
We don't know how it will affect that, and at some point, should that come forward, then TSO will deal with it. George, did you have anything further you wanted to say?
You just said it, Lynn. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
And another quick question, is the thirty, and this, I'm just curious. It's not going to change how I vote or anything, but I'm curious. The thirty number sounded really a lot of accidents, but it was over three years. And I was curious what the average number might be on any other similar street.
I don't know that we, you know, go ahead.
There really isn't an average number on a street, but that is, that is a high number for that street. That's, that's high.
Okay. My question's quite simple. How soon will this go into effect? When, once we voted on November eighth?
It'll probably take a month to get the signs because it's, it's actually a special order sign we have to get.
So just about the time the semester ends?
Yeah, so they'll go up, up when the semester ends and they'll be there when they come back.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
I was just, I, I like the proposal and I agree that having the criteria is very helpful. And so I'm also hoping that, I know TSO's plate is very full, Evan and everyone who's on it, but looking at some of these other streets, just have some ideas on what you're going to say if they start asking. You know, so it may be George's request about ownership. Could also be how wide are some of these streets or their sidewalks, just some basic lay of the land, pretty much near the university. Then the last one I have is just one that's up in North Amherst. When you add university-owned, can you add state-owned roads? Because we've run into an issue about a dead deer that it turns out the town doesn't pick up a dead deer, even if the police deposited it. We have to get the state to pick it up if it's on a state road, but who would have known? You know, so it's, so people don't even necessarily know who's responsible on a road. So it, it's just, it's a useful list to have.
Thank you. Pat?
I, I'm not in support of this. I'm dancing back to March. And a young woman, I believe, was a graduate student at UMass, asked us quite clearly, what kind of town did we want to be? And I find that we are making a private street for the residents of Lincoln Avenue. I've driven that street. It is not hard to maneuver. It is not unsafe. Churchill, I believe it's Churchill, that's between the church and the police department, is much more difficult. Are we going to get rid of parking eight to five there? I, I, I think the, it said, talked about losing forty-five parking spaces. This is absolutely ridiculous. And the, the idea that you're going to move cars that now park safely on Lincoln to the other streets and then wait for them to get upset before we do anything does not make one bit of sense to me. I'm, I'm just sorry. This is kowtowing to a very privileged group of people. And I, I've I just find it appalling that I, I agreed with the changes about corners and, and having clear lines. I remember an elderly woman, probably my age, maybe a little older, who said she was having trouble backing out on Lincoln Avenue. It wasn't safe. Well, I have a bush that when it's, has all its leaves, I can't see one side of my street if I back out. It's real, and now that I have some little kids on the street, I'm really concerned. So now I back into my driveway, so I have clear vision. So I will say to that elderly woman, which I was not able to do during public comment way back in March, back into your driveway where it's safe, where you have the space, and then you have visibility when you pull out. This is, this is, this is elitism to the extreme, and I'm really opposed to it.
Alyssa?
So I raised my hand because I wanted to make a motion to suspend Town Council Rules Procedure eight-point-four for the current agenda item. Would you rather I didn't do that until you heard more comments or?
No, please go ahead.
I did that. So I moved to suspend Town Council Rules Procedure eight-point-four for the current agenda item.
Is there a second?
Ryan's second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion?
So if I could just say briefly, I don't think we're going to learn anything different between now and our next meeting, if it's not tomorrow in November. And so I think we should get going with this process.
Okay. I'm taking comments only on the motion. Steve?
I'll pass.
Darcy? Only comments on the motion to suspend eight-point-four.
Yeah, I just am am wanting to know exactly what motion it is suspending it for. Is it the Lincoln Avenue motion or is it the, which one of the motions was taken off the agenda?
The Lincoln Avenue motion. And at that point, we will have Evan pull up the motion that was passed, or I'll have Dana pull it up when Evan tells her where it is, the motion that was passed by TSO.
And which motion was taken off our agenda tonight?
Oh, it was a motion about the other streets.
Of the Sunset?
Sunset, Lincoln North, Lincoln South of Amity, et cetera, yeah. Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to suspend eight-point-four. Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to quickly take a roll call. Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Shalini Baumil?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Grease Mercer, yes. Mandy Jo Hanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
The motion passes. It is eleven in favor, one opposed. No abstentions, one absent. So we are now going to then need to look at a motion that is like the motion that was passed in. Okay. Okay, so the motion is. Evan, would you do me the favor?
Yes, I will go ahead and make the motion. So I moved that the Town Council adopt the following regulations for Lincoln Ave. Parking prohibited as a toe zone from September one to May thirty-one, Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM on the east side of Lincoln Avenue from a distance of two hundred feet north of Amity Street to sixty feet south of McClellan Street. Parking prohibited as a toe zone from September one to May thirty-one, Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM on the east side of Lincoln Avenue from a distance of sixty feet north of McClellan Street to thirty feet south of Fearing Street. Parking prohibited as a toe zone on the east side of Lincoln Ave from Fearing Street to North Hadley Road.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any further question? Darcy?
Yeah, just, you know, we had some discussion at the most recent TSO meeting and about the whole, you know, the whole idea that this has, there was a couple of issues. Passing this would affect, would immediately affect the adjacent streets. And we just chose not to deal with that. We also talked about adding that as a, in the list of criteria, which isn't there yet, but people agreed that it should be in there. It just doesn't make sense to me. And also the fact that, that we aren't sure what's going to happen if UMass, you know, very shortly blocks off the end of the street. And so this whole thing might not even be needed for a period of time that we, we don't even know how long that would be. And so it just seemed inadvisable to me to do something that is immediately going to affect parking on other streets. We should be doing it more holistically.
Darcy, I'm going to just quickly speak to that and say that I believe that you have all received an email from me that describes a process by which we determine what additional items or might need to be conveyed to the next council. And just today, I sent an email to the Chair of TSO to suggest that this is one of those items you might want to discuss and include in that memo that we consider during the month of December. Okay?
What, what would be the item?
Whether the affected streets around there should be included in a future agenda of TSO when the new council convenes. Okay. Mandy Jo?
Yes, thank you. One of the things in the report was traffic flow data that said about two thousand vehicles a day is considered low to moderate traffic. But Superintendent Maureen indicated that he believed that it might be lower than that and traffic volume should be considered high, and that that went into the consideration as to whether to recommend no parking because of the width or not. And so I'm curious what the difference, what, what traffic volume is considered low, what is considered moderate, what is considered high? Because this one indicates two thousand's low to moderate, yet high, you know, it's not even considered moderate to high. The indication was you'd consider it high. So what are those volumes?
Guilford?
That's a good question. When we, we did the, we did the traffic study probably over ten years ago, we were probably about twice the volumes, we, we're probably twice the volumes we are now. Right now, the volume is around the volumes. Yeah, right now, the volumes from the study were five thousand, fifty-seven hundred vehicles through the, through the whole time period. So it was about two thousand, and I think we were, we did a, we were at four to five thousand vehicles a day during the study ten years ago. But I have to get all that information together again for you. I don't have it off the top of my head. Traffic volumes have dropped over the last ten or so years.
Could, could you though, what I'm more curious about is what's the split between what, what volume is considered low volume? What's considered medium volume and what's considered high volume? Okay.
I, I think we should assume that you will get back to us on that rather than try to solve that here. Is that okay?
Except the motion's on the table. We now have a motion on the table that I have to vote on.
Right.
Right, right now, for this, for this type of road is probably a medium-volume road. But you also have to look at the, if you look at the chart But you also have to look at the, if you look at the chart inside your memo you have, you can see the, the peaks and valleys and how it's not constant flow during the whole day. You have high flow going in in the morning and you have high flow coming out in the afternoon. So you don't have a lot of high two-way volume in there. So it's a little, it's probably about medium flow in there.
Mandy Jo, do you need us to access that chart?
I think I can probably find that.
Okay.
It's, it's three, three, eight A on your in the packet.
Athena, are you in the report or did you pull this out separately?
This is from the TSO report.
So is the report on the screen is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're looking at the TSO report.
Can you find the table that Guilford's referred?
It's down at the bottom.
It's in this report, Guilford?
Um, go to the bottom. It's at almost the very bottom.
You're, you're in the TSO report, right?
Oh, he, he wanted the memo.
He needed a memo, yeah, sorry.
Yep.
It's page 22 of the memo.
I could share it real quick if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is, this is the, the volumes and the peak times. You can see the, the art, the art, can everybody see the chart?
We're not seeing it yet.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
So there's two different colors here. Blue is, is northbound going into campus. Yellow is, or orange is out of campus. And you can see that it's kind of two different cycles here is what I mean by they wasn't, it was not traffic in both directions all the time. So it's just not a very high flow all the time. It's, it's directional high flow and it's, it is, but it's a medium flow. I would call it really a high flow. But this is the chart. In fact, you can see kind of how that works.
Mandy Jo, does that answer your question?
I'm good.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you. I'm, I'm trying, I have a very naive question. When it's dark out, it's harder to drive. And yet we can park on this street in the dark, which is most of the year in New England. And cars can go up and down and it's okay. But during the day, it's, it's not safe. And people who have their driveways can get their cars off the road and, and they can have guests at night who park on the street, but nobody can be on that street in the daytime. And then if it's directional high flow, why can't there be parking on one side? It, it just doesn't make sense. It's a decision that is a decision about placating elite people. And if the people, if we're going to get rid of all the parking on Lincoln Avenue, then we probably really do need the parking garage. So that will upset the people who live near the parking garage, and they're mostly upper-class white people, so we're going to probably not do that either. And, and this, this really gets my working class gut going. And I'm sorry I'm not being logical. It, I, I, I do feel like I'm being logical. I think I'm being a little too emotional. But if this goes through, it's appalling. And then we need to start fighting to clear parking off of Churchill. Because I've gone through there when I used to go to, to be in Sanctuary with Lucio, and it's very dangerous. Nobody cares because it's a, you know, get your act together and think about what you're doing and how it's going to affect the other streets. And then what's going to happen when those people don't like it? You, you're really making a snowball, and, and I'm really sorry. I'm being. Anyway, I'm done.
Evan?
Uh, yeah, so I, I wanted to speak on my own opinion and not as TSO Chair, uh, because I, I made the motion because I am Chair of TSO, and it was a motion that was passed by TSO. But I will reveal that I was the one member who voted against the motion in the committee. A little bit of awkwardness making the, the motion. And, and this was a, this was a vote that I've really struggled with because I think if you do look at the criteria, if you apply the criteria very objectively, then there shouldn't be parking on that street if you're going by just the criteria. And, and I think that that's important. At the, at the other side of it, I struggled with essentially two things. One was that we're about to see a big change on this street. What we've, what we've heard from residents from DPW is that the, the reason there's a concern on the street is that it is used as a main artery to campus from Amity and North Hampton Road. And now that artery is about to be clogged, for lack of a better term, because UMass is about to shut the end of that street. And from what I've heard from folks who attended the meeting that UMass had with District 3 residents in the neighborhood, UMass is not closing off the option of if, if they like how that goes, of just keeping that closed permanently. And essentially Lincoln becomes sort of a, a dead end. So to me, it almost feels premature to make this change now as we're about to see the street close for two years and perhaps permanently. Because all of a sudden, that traffic flow that Guilford is showing, that shows peaks at 8:00 AM going towards campus and 6:00 PM coming out, that might not be the same situation. And if traffic flow changes, I think that does change some of the analysis. The other thing that I've struggled with is, is maybe a little bit more personal, and that's I, I'm struggling with what happens to the folks who have been using that because they need to access campus but either can't afford parking permits on campus or right now there aren't any, that university is sold out. You can't even get one if you can't afford it. And so what are those people going to do? And I, I did raise this in, in TSO, which is, you know, what is our responsibility to those folks who may be Amherst residents or may not be, they may be coming in from surrounding communities? What's our responsibility to them as a committee? And I guess that now comes to what's our responsibility to them as a council? And I haven't really gotten what my answer is to that question. And so I'm having trouble making a change that's going to impact them pretty significantly and pretty immediately if we're looking at maybe like next month this goes into effect without, without really knowing, so what does this mean? And I guess the answer is it probably means that it flows over on the sunset, and then we have sunset calling us. And then we, we play this jigsaw puzzle. And so these are the things I, I'm really struggling with. And so I could be convinced that at some point maybe parking isn't appropriate on Lincoln. I'm not sure I'm there until I, until I have a better understanding of, of those, of uh, what it's going to look like once the street is closed. And if UMass plans to keep that closed permanently and what happens to the folks who are parking there now, I'm just not sure I'm there. And I feel tough doing that because I want to be evidence-based and I want to look at it objectively from the criteria. But I'm just not able to get myself there. And so the last thing I will say, because I'm sure I'm over my three minutes, is if we do move forward with this and we do make this change, will there be an effort to notify the people who park there that they won't be able to do so in like a month? And I don't, I don't know how that even occurs because we don't know who they are unless we're going through and terrifying them by thinking, making them think we gave them tickets, but just putting notifications. But I think there needs to be at least some notification if this vote does go through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, there are going to be big changes. There's no question. And Evan's right that we're not sure what, in the end, what this will result in. I think in the short term, we all know what it's going to result in. There's going to continue to be a stream of cars parked on the east side of Lincoln. At 20, at least 20 long. I do disagree with my colleague, Pat. I drive that street far more often than she does. I drive it every day, and I drive it at all times. And between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday, during the school year, it is wall-to-wall cars. And it does create a, a serious problem. It, we solve it, we survive. But, and it's also a serious problem for the people who live there in terms of trying to get out of the driveways and get in. You try to back into your driveway when you've got cars parked on both sides of it. I can't do that. I don't think Pat would want to try that either. So that's the first thought. There's going to be big changes. The biggest change, by the way, is going to be a 623-person undergraduate dormitory at the end of Lincoln and a 200-some graduate student housing project just a little bit further up the street from it. So what impact that will have, I don't know. But certainly will make parking on Lincoln even more attractive to, to folks who want to schlep up to the university, to the housing. So we know in the short term that the impact will be continued parking on that street. After that, we don't know. So right now, I'm, I'm just dealing with one problem at a time. I can't deal with all the problems. So I think this is a good first step, and then we'll have to reevaluate. In fact, the impact on neighboring streets, again, I don't know. Maybe it will be a problem, maybe it won't. I don't know. So we'll have to wait and see. But we have dealt with this now for over a year and a half, almost two years. And so I think it's time for us to just make a decision and hopefully make the decision that would be to approve this, and then we'll deal with what comes from it.
Steve?
Yeah, so I'm going to join my colleagues who have indicated they're going to vote no. Maybe for different reasons, but what's going through my head is that the best way to turn a local road into a collector road is to remove parking from one side of it. And the best way to turn a collector road into, into an arterial is to remove parking from both sides. So I was looking at an old road classification map, and I think that Lincoln was classified as a local road 10 years ago, 14 years ago, something like that. I, I know that a big goal of Lincoln has to reduce, is to reduce traffic on Lincoln. So they have two competing goals. One is to reduce traffic. Two is to eliminate parking. Those are incompatible, or traffic speeds. Those are incompatible. The best way to reduce traffic speed and to frankly make the road safer is to have parking at least on one side to basically narrow that, to keep it from being a Speedway. So in, I completely get the wall-to-wall parking and how that would be annoying if you live there. It is, you know, it's not ideal, right? So I mean, we have the same problem here on Lower Taylor Street. Exact same problem. Parking's allowed on one side of the road all the time. If that happens, it's fine. If people park on the other side of the road, which is allowed, then it's not fine. But parking on one side of Lincoln and allowing for traffic can pass and traffic does pass. Did I run out my, run out the clock?
I believe so.
I've been quiet tonight, so I bought some, I've accrued some time. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Alyssa? Please start.
Great. So it's taken a while for me to come around to this side. I thought George was going to fall out of his chair at TSO when I supported this. But what I'm seeing is that the issues are basically speed, traffic flow, and parking. Speed, we dealt with years ago by putting in speed bumps. So we're not going to turn it into a Speedway, even if there's no parking, because there's still speed bumps there that are going to prevent it from becoming a Speedway. Traffic flow is definitely going to decrease when they cut back, when they cut off the end of the road. But parking itself is still a problem. And in fact, as they take parking spaces out of commission there, where there are parking spaces right now that they're going to take out of commission to build on and to also be staging for the building, that's going to put even more pressure on Lincoln and the surrounding streets. People who've been parking there are not going to like their assigned parking spaces at UMass, and they're going to try and park closer to where they were. So we're going to see increased pressure because of this. Closing that street off is not going to decrease pressure. It's actually going to increase pressure. I also want to point out, since we seem to be going down this road, that we have been working on this a really long time, and we have let these people down. I want you to understand that what we voted in '20 hasn't actually been executed. We didn't do all those sightlines. We didn't put up all those signs. That, that just didn't happen. So we need to do this for the reasons I just stated, but we also need to recognize that this has not been the most effective process. And we're all trying to get better, and we're all trying to do different things. But we need to move forward with this at this time. And definitely, once the new buildings are built, then we're going to have a very different conversation about what's appropriate, and people will have gotten completely different parking spaces, et cetera. And we will be looking at a different situation once that construction is done. But even if we say two years now, who knows how long it'll actually be.
Pat?
A quick question for Guilford and the town manager. Why weren't the sightlines done? Why wasn't all of the work that we approved done? So you've left us with the problem instead of even seeing if adding distance to corners and space near driveways was going to work. Guilford, you don't have that information. And that, that's kind of, it was a simple, they were simple fixes. Why didn't they happen?
So it's been a pretty long and heated meeting, and it's getting more heated. And I'll just add a little fuel to the fire, maybe. I don't mean to. But we do not have a completely foolproof system when the council makes a vote and sends anything back to the departments on what's supposed to happen. And I did not get everything I needed in order to get written up. So most of what was done was done because it was already approved some other, it was already approved other ways. But what was approved that time, I didn't get anything from the council saying this is your final saying on what you wanted to do. And I apologize for saying it that way. Maybe it's just late and I'm tired like you are too, but I apologize for that.
Dorothy?
Well, I, I think in defense of Guilford, I think we had a COVID shutdown and we had a lot of chaos. But in terms of what was just said by Alyssa, in terms of we will wait and see what happens, UMass, in a, in a communication that I, I got just this week, says that as part of this new building process, there's going to be a lot of new parking spaces created by UMass on UMass campus. Right now, we've heard that there are not enough spots and there's a waiting list for spots. So things will be different. They will change. So we're talking about let's get through the next couple of years. We'll look at it again. But I do think not to do something now would be to make us look like a body that can't do anything. So I hope that you will approve this now and understand that things are going to change, and we'll look at it after they have changed, and we see what the impacts are.
Shalane?
So can we implement what we had approved earlier and see what the effects of that are? And then go to this as a last resort?
The only way to do that would be not approve this and let that go forward. Okay?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not asking.
That's your decision as to whether you want to approve this or not.
No, I get that, but I'm at, putting that out to the counselors is what do they feel about that option?
That's the option that's on the table right now is this option.
Yeah, but my response to this option will be once I know if that is an option that people will support.
Okay. Let's see what people have to say. Mandy Jo?
Um, two things. The first one is I'm very disappointed about enforcement, and I'm not going to blame anyone about that. But I think it, it signs whatever. There's state laws that say how close cars can speak, can park to the edge of streets or the edge of driveways in Massachusetts. You know, there's just state laws about that. And we've known parking's been a problem on Lincoln for a while, and our parking enforcement officers don't seem to be enforcing the state laws on distance away from driveways for cars. So that should happen. But the other thing I wanted to say is I came into this meeting knowing it was a first discussion, but leaning towards based on the TSO report, a vote of yes. but leaning towards based on the T S O report, a vote of yes. Even though earlier on I was a clear no vote because of many of the things Pat said, but the criteria and all of that made sense to me. Um, after this, the discussion tonight and hearing from Pat and Evan in particular, but also Steve, um, I'm, I'm gonna vote no.
George?
I don't even know where, and I don't want to get into it really, but this whole elitism, classism stuff is, is really depressing to me. Um, we're also looking at Kendrick Place, so we're gonna apply that criteria to that and say, well, that's clearly not a very elite neighborhood. It's just, you know, whatever. And so I, I just, I don't understand it. We deal with each issue on its merits. And the fact that a particular group of people are bringing it to me is immaterial. Um, if you have an objection about the merits, fine. But if you're going to reject something simply because of the kind of people who are bringing it, um, I'm, I'm offended by that. Okay? I guess, yeah, at this point, it's late, we're tired. We're just gonna kick the can down the road. The, I guess the other thing is just what is it that, that is, that wasn't realized last time? Is it just marking the fire hydrants and marking the driveways? Was that it? Because everything else was done. All the setbacks from the various streets and intersections were done. So was it actually going out with a can of paint? Is that what we failed to do? Um, is it, Mandy's right about enforcement, but that's a problem everywhere. Um, we don't have enough enforcement people. We, we don't choose to hire anymore. And then we ask them to do everything under the sun. So, um, yes, you can blame enforcement. You can say, well, we didn't realize, we didn't do everything that was in the initial motion. Uh, the only thing that I recall that wasn't done, and Alyssa will correct me and that's fine, was that we did not mark the fire hydrants. And we did not, I don't know what we were supposed to do with driveways. Um, but you think people are gonna, well, anyway, so maybe somebody can enlighten me on what it was that, uh, Shalini seems to think that if we did that, then we'll see what happens. And then we'll go back and do it again and again and again and again. So somebody just help me understand what, what wasn't done um, that would be so crucial, would make a tremendous difference, because I can't at the moment recall what it was.
Alyssa?
I thought that information was in our report, but um, we didn't do all the sightlines, George. We didn't put up all the signs for that because as Guilford pointed out, that wasn't communicated to him. No one ever agreed to paint the driveways or the fire hydrants. That never happened. That didn't, that got discussed. It never happened. So if you want that to happen, that's gonna be a whole different discussion because we don't do that as a matter of course, and it wasn't done here and we never voted that it would be done. So it was literally the sightlines. I understand what Shalini said and I understand what Pat said. And believe me, it wasn't pleasant to bring this up, but the reality is it's not going to make enough of a difference. And that is why I am supporting doing this now.
Dorothy?
I just want to defend the D P W department. I drove on McClellan to make a left turn onto Lincoln a few days ago and I saw cars parked right up to the absolute corner. You know, a driver with common sense knows you can't do that, but they did it because the sign had been removed. So I didn't notice that, but a constituent sent me an email saying, telling me the sign had been removed and it was the most dangerous way to make a turn. You had to drive, ease your car slowly into the middle of the intersection, hoping not to be hit at full impact nor even see down the road. So we can't count on drivers to use common sense. We have to tell them where you can park and when you can't park. And the town responded immediately. All right? That sign was restored. So I think that, as George says, maybe we're asking them to do too much with too little, but I would say that they really did respond. Um, we're talking safety. I don't want to, I don't think that safety has a class. I think safety is an issue. There have been accidents, there have been near accidents, there have been the cars taking off each other's mirrors, there have been people trying to exit their driveways. Now, if that doesn't matter to you, then you can vote no. But if you care about safety and the fact that the town department has checked this, has measured it, and the T S O had a very careful procedure outlined and went through it item by item. And we're, as we say, as George says, we're gonna do Kendrick Place very soon.
George?
We have classes issues then?
Yeah, I, I just, I have walked that street after we, this all got done a year ago. Um, and I, my memory is very clear. I checked all of the various signs and they have been moved. There is, there are clear sidelines and that was part of what we had requested. So that has been done. And if someone has evidence that it hasn't been done, I'd like to see it. Because I remember going out with my phone, taking pictures and marking it off, and the signs had been moved um, to get the appropriate distance from those intersections. Um, particularly at Northampton Road, I'm sorry, at Amity Street, I'm sorry, at Amity Street, um, that was moved and also at McClellan. So what makes it difficult at McClellan is just that there's so many cars, it's hard for you to see. Um, so I don't know what else you want us to do um, other than simply throw up our hands and say, we just can't make a decision, so we're just gonna leave it the way it is.
Dorothy, your hand's still up. Did you have something else to say? All right. I, any other comments at this time? We're going to move to a vote. Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Shalini Baumell?
I don't know. Can you come back to me?
Yes. Alyssa Brewer?
Thank you.
Hi.
Patty Angeles?
No.
Darcy Demont?
No.
Lynn Griesmer's an I. Mandy Johannicky?
No.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
No.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Shalini Baumell?
No.
It's a tie vote, therefore it does not. Pat, um, am I correct that it does not pass? Okay. All right. We're moving on to an item that was pulled from consent, the performance shell items. There's two of them. Uh, Darcy, would you, um, yes, Darcy, would you please speak to why you wanted to pull these off of consent?
I just, I just pulled the one, the performance shell.
It's two, it's two motions. Both of them were referrals. One is a referral of the maintenance fund to the finance committee and the review of the public way policy to T S O and outreach.
What public way policy?
The town council's public way policy. We have a policy.
There's two motions with regard to the performance shell?
Yes, and they're both on the motion sheet.
Well, um, I pulled it off because I felt that it that we hadn't made any decision about adopting any particular proposal. So to refer it to the finance committee to establish a maintenance fund felt like it was premature.
We referred the shell to T S O. In the process of doing that, there now, the bid is setting up various meetings with the um, various committees that need to review the proposal for the shell. In the meantime, there are two items that were discussed during our discussion of the shell and the referral. One of those items was that the bid is putting together a fund for maintenance. And the uh, motion is, the one motion is to refer that fund with regard to maintenance um, to the finance committee for review and recommendation to the town council. And the other is to relook at our public way policy to determine whether or not it needs to have any adaptations because there will be a performance shell of a much more permanent nature. So let me start by reading the motions and looking for seconds. The first one is to refer a measure for the establishment and ongoing administration of a maintenance fund regarding the proposed performance shell on the South Common to the finance committee for review and recommendation to the town council by December sixth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Hannocky second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Darcy?
Yeah, I guess I just, um, I don't think there was anything in the packet about any of this. Am I incorrect about that?
It was in our previous packet when we discussed the performance shell.
The, the, there wasn't anything about the establishment of a maintenance fund?
It was in the presentation as, as presented by Gabrielle Gould.
Okay, so that wasn't in our packet for this meeting. Um, so.
These are leftover motions that we did not make that night, but we discussed.
Uh, yeah, so I guess my concern is just that um, I, we had discussed at our last meeting that, that there was gonna be a referral to the design review board.
Of the shell, yes.
Um, Catherine Porter came to our T S O meeting and sat through the whole two and a half hour meeting just so she could ask the question at the end um, as to, you know, what, what was gonna happen with the referral to the design review board? Um, and whether it was going to come, what, what was going to happen to the referral? And it just makes sense to me for the design review board to be weighing in because um, there's been a lot of public comment out there about the design. And um, it doesn't seem like it's, um, it seems like we need to know if we're going to have a performance space. What, what that space is going to be, if it's, if it's going to be the proposal that's put forward by the bid, that's one thing. But if it's not, we have to plan based on some alternative design. Um, so, and I think you've probably all seen out there on social media and everywhere else, everybody weighing in about the, the design. Um, and I would like to have a lot more I would like to hear from the design review board before any other entity actually because uh, they could get, they could do outreach, they could um, look at the proposal and see if they think that it, that's into the, to the um, setting. And um.
Okay, Darcy. The, the whole design and the approval of a performance shell has been referred to T S O. T S O will only consider that and recommend back to the council after it has received the reports from the design review board and two other committees. I can't even remember what they are at this hour. That's a whole separate issue.
Well, then we, we need a referral to the design review board because there.
No, we do not need that referral. We referred it to T S O. When T S O makes its consideration, they will ask and make sure that they don't do that consideration until the design review board and the other two committees have submitted written reports to T S O. And we referred it to T S O so that it now has a home. And whether it gets done before the end of our term or it gets carried forward in our motions for what gets carried forward will remain to be seen based on whether or not the, all of those committees have met and they've been able to write their reports. And T S O has had considerable time to make its recommendation back to the council. That is a very separate thing and it is happening and this is not approving the shell. All this is doing is looking at a fund to maintain it and whether our public way policy is sufficient for having a permanent performance shell on the common. That's what these two motions are about.
Okay, so T S O needs to reach out to those committees.
That David, David Zomack is already speaking with Gabrielle Gould. They're setting up the appointments. Those appointments, and Gabrielle Gould and I were in touch and she is now in touch regularly with Evan with a C C to me to let me know how those committee schedules are going. Nothing will happen in T S O until such time as those committees have met, they have completed their deliberations and they have written reports. And then T S O will look at the whole picture together.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why the bid is orchestrating this.
Because they are raising the money to build it.
Yeah, um, it's still our.
They have come to us to ask whether or not they are able to have permission from us to build a structure on our public way.
Right, but I think they've given, it should be in our lap now and we should be orchestrating the input that we're getting from our own committees.
Our staff of the town is orchestrating all of those committees. And when we do, when they do that, Gabrielle and her team will present to each of those committees. As would anybody else who wants to build a structure anywhere.
Okay.
Alyssa?
Thank you. I just want to speak in support of moving forward on both of these two items because I, it makes sense to me that we are going to, whatever happens, whatever the design ends up looking like, we are going to need to talk about the maintenance fund, as was discussed when we had the presentation. And we're going to need to talk about how it gets booked, which is different than what we do on a day to day basis when the town manager just takes care of booking the common because the band shell itself, the performance shell, sorry, misspoke. I just want to be clear, we never have ever in three years referred something to, to the design review board. We don't refer things to other committees. We have done outreach at different levels and as Lynn just pointed out, we made it clear at our last town council meeting that staff was coordinating this. This was not in T S O's lap to do the coordination. It wasn't in T S O's lap to do the outreach to those committees. That has been true in the past. It is not true for this project. This project is being managed by staff. The fact that Ms. Porter had to sit through our meeting was due to a miscommunication with, between staff. It was not because we have to, as T S O, reach out to her. It is in T S O, just on the holding pattern, as Lynn indicated, waiting for staff to organize those other things.
So the motion on the table is to refer a measure for the establishment and ongoing administration of a maintenance fund regarding the proposed performance shell on the South Common to the finance committee for review and recommendation to the town council by December sixth, twenty twenty-one. It's been made and seconded. Are there any other questions? Shalini?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Is it a good time?
Please.
Um, yeah, you know, um, it was mentioned that there is public comment about the design or this and that. And I just want to highlight that there was a process in which there was a seven person, that the bid used uh, long ago with seven person jury that included members from the select board, the design review board, the planning board, the historical commission and the town planning department. And then that jury basically looked at the fifteen entries and, and then the, the plans were available for public viewing at the Jones Library as well as the town. And so there was a whole process that was done, which has finally led And so there was a whole process that was done, which has finally led to where we are today. And it's just maybe people don't know about that and they're like, suddenly where did the bid come out? And why are they making the decisions and all of that? But it's just good to know that there's a whole process that was followed. And now we're here with the bid actually raising the funds for us to build this design that was, went through a process. So I support it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Then I'm going to move to a vote. Steve Schreiber?
Can you repeat the motion? I'm so sorry.
To refer a measure for the establishment and ongoing administration of a maintenance fund regarding the proposed performance shell on the South Common to the Finance Committee for Review and Recommendation to the Town Council by December 6th, 2021.
Aye, thank you.
Steve, Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Shalini Baumell?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmerz, yes. Mandy Johanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
It's unanimous 12-0-0-1. The next motion is to refer, review of the town council policy way, of the town council policy way, policy, I think it's policy way regarding the control public way, thank you. The public policy of the public way. Regarding the control and regulation of the public ways as it relates to the process for reserving the proposed performance shell on the South Common to the Town Services and Outreach Committee for Review and Recommendation to the Town Council by December 6th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Shalini Baumell?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmerz, an I. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
It's 12-0-0-1 absent. Okay, we're going on, we've done the appointments. Committee reports. Mandy Jo?
CRC? Three quick things. Next Tuesday, October 26th, CRC will be holding second hearings on the mixed use buildings proposal, proposed revisions and the C V S lot proposed overlay, which is a revision from the original proposal. The mixed use buildings will start at 2:00 and the overlay will start immediately thereafter. It has a time of 2:15. On November 9th, CRC will hold hearings on the parking proposals for the parking and access regulations. That is a second hearing due to not getting, due to a number of things, but we'll hold another hearing on that on November 9th. I had said that would be at 2:00 o'clock. It will actually be the second hearing of the day because tonight we referred temporary zoning article 14 for hearing. We're going to hold that hearing, CRC will hold that hearing on November 9th at 2:00 P. M. That will be the first of two on November 9th with parking to follow after the temporary zoning hearing. The third thing, CRC is attempting to make recommendations to fill two associate member vacancies to the Z B A. We need applicants. It is our entire council's job to sit, to try and recruit people to apply and fill out CAFs for Z B A associate position applicants. So I'm here asking all of you to talk to people you might know that might be interested in serving as associate members of the Z B A. For reference, as those associate members sit on Z B A hearings when a full member, a regular member cannot sit on a hearing. So they don't have to sit on all the hearings. They only have to attend meetings for the hearings that they're sitting on and they are assigned in rotation to do that. And so please find and talk to people about the need for Z B A associate members and applying and fill out the CAF. Thanks.
Thank you. Elementary school building?
Nothing new to report. We're meeting this Thursday at 8:00 in the morning to talk about a draft, draft ideas for website design. And on November 2nd, as I've reported before, three of us will be going or zooming into the M S B A panel to narrow the eight designer proposals down to probably three. We don't know exactly how many will be shortlisted.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee? Andy?
Yes. I'll quickly do it by going over five dates. And it explains what the committee is doing and also how the council's going to be reminder of how the council's going to be interacting with budget now that we're getting back into budget season. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. It was a tentative meeting if we were able to discuss two items. One is a revised draft of the financial management policy and objectives discussed at our last meeting. And the other was transferring funds to stabilization funds. Both of those were not ready for recommendations from staff. So the committee, the committee meeting will not happen tomorrow. It was canceled. Second date is November 15th, which we are posting as a finance committee meeting. In addition to it being posted as a council meeting and library trustees school committee, because that's the annual meeting when the town manager and finance director present the financial trends report and their initial projections for the F Y 22. Excuse me, trying to get my, my years right. The F Y 23 budget. And so that's actually a council meeting too. The next day is November 16th. The committee is meeting to start working on the budget guidelines to propose to the council. We have two meetings scheduled for that initially, February, November 16th and 23rd so that we can report to the council for discussion at December 6th meeting. And if the council refers it back to the finance committee for further action before adoption, we will also have a meeting posted for December 7th, the day after, so that we can take whatever input is available for the, from the council meeting for a later date. So that, that kind of lays out all of the pieces of where the finance committee is working and how that interrelates with the budget process and the council's work on the budget process. So I think that's, that's all I was going to report on.
I'm only going to add one amendment to that, and that is on the 15th, we will start with the financial indicators. We will have our required public forum on the budget. And then we will have some additional town council items, most of which I'm anticipating will be financial in nature. T S O, no, I'm sorry, G O L, George?
Thank you, Lynn. The FinCom process is proceeding. As you know, we're filling one position. The SOIs are due on Friday. And we'll be, we will be reviewing the surveillance technology by law on Wednesday.
T S O, Evan?
Only thing, so T S O will be holding a public hearing this Thursday, the 21st at 6:30 P. M. Regarding parking regulation changes on Kendrick Place. So councils are free to attend that as members of the public if they're curious. And if you know anyone on, they've received, they've received notices, but if you know anyone, just remind them that it's happening so we can hear from the street. But that's all.
Okay. Are there any liaison reports? Okay. We've approved the minutes. Paul, town manager's report?
You're muted.
Paul, you're muted. Thanks.
Thank you. So I want to follow up on some comments made earlier tonight and, you know, about staff follow up and things like that. And while we're not perfect, we tend to follow up on things the council has acted on. Every morning and the day after the town council meeting, I write a detailed email to all the department heads that outlines every action taken by the, by the council. The clerk of the council is superb at communicating every action that the town council has taken. And so any failure to deliver is not on the clerk of the council. And so the communication lies on the other end. And I want to be clear about where that responsibility lies. In terms of my report, we are offering booster shots to people on a regular basis every Thursday. Test kits are available to folks. Early voting starts next Monday. And so people can come into town hall and vote during normal business hours. And that's all I have for tonight.
Are there any questions from the town, for the town manager at this time? Okay. Town council comments? I just want to remind you, we have a meeting next week. I'm sorry, Pat, you have your hand up.
Yes, I want to apologize to Paul and Guilford and also to the council. I really let my frustration dip really deeply into anger and it was, and and I apologize.
Thank you, Pat. On October 25th, we have, only two items are on our agenda. I have purposely kept it that way. One is a presentation by this community safety working group. And this will be their final, meeting their final item on their charge. And the other one is the D A B final vote. I also do want to mention that Pat and I are having a district two meeting on Wednesday. All are welcome. We will be discussing both the Jones Library and we will be discussing the D A B. Dorothy, other comments from councils? You probably mentioned this earlier. I have down for tomorrow, a four o'clock town council meeting. I'm assuming that that's not going to take place. We are canceling that meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the meeting's adjourned at 11:43 P. M.